Good late afternoon, early evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Oceanside City Council, October 6, 2021. Row call, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Keine.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Weiss.
Please stand for the invocation. We have today Tim Parlier, lead teaching pastor at Generation Church. Pastor Parlier.
All right. Thanks for having me. Pray with me. Dear God, thanks for your love for us. Thanks that even though we do our best to care for those under us and with us in our lives, whether it be this city, or our friends, or our family, thank you that ultimately you're in control and you love us. I just lift up these public servants, both the city council members here, officers, everyone that's serving our city. I ask that you would lighten their load, that you give them supernatural wisdom to care for the things you've put in their hands. Ask for supernatural infilling of love to care for their immediate families. I pray for perspective, that they would just see what you see, or that our hearts would break for what breaks yours, and that you would move each and every one of us to bring health, to bring care, to bring love to the city of Oceanside in the way that you would like to see happen here. I know it's been a hard last 18 months or so, and these jobs of public servants are like mine. People might assume the worst at times, and yet I just pray that they would be encouraged to know that you see them, you care for them, that you're sustaining them. And God, I pray that you would infuse them with just everything that they need for today, for tonight, for tomorrow, and the rest of this year. Bless our time together. Give us wisdom and guidance. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Parlier, for your words. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Do we have FACO in the house? Yes, FACO's in the house. This is our time for proclamations and presentations, and you'll see that we have four. We usually have two or three, but we have four things to celebrate, big events, and actually smaller events too that didn't make it on the agenda. But what I want to say, and I want to stand in the middle here so I can be surrounded by these beautiful ladies who have worked so hard from the Filipino-American Cultural Organization for the city of Oceanside. And I have a proclamation here. And then I'm going to hand the mic over to Mary Lou, and she's going to introduce everyone. But proclamation in honor of 20th Annual Oceanside Filipino Cultural Celebration and National Filipino-American History Month 2021. Whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian Pacific Islander group in the United States and a significant and integral part of our diverse Oceanside community; and whereas in 2009, Congress recognized October as Filipino-American History Month in the United States; and whereas the Filipino-American Cultural Organization, we call it FACO, established in 1976, is an organization whose focus is youth, education, scholarships, disaster relief, and preservation and promotion of cultural heritage; and whereas FACO has a broad membership representing all regions of the Philippines and whose role in the community is especially important in Oceanside, where Filipino-Americans have made vital contributions in medicine, the military, technology, government, and the economy; and whereas FACO is working to celebrate the diversity of our community and foster understanding and appreciation of Filipino culture by partnering with the Oceanside Public Library for the 20th year to present the annual Oceanside Filipino Cultural Celebration this Saturday, October 9, 2021, at the Oceanside Civic Center. And whereas the Oceanside Filipino Cultural Celebration will be filled with music and dance performances, traditional dress, and arts from the Philippines and for the Filipino-American community, and will celebrate National Filipino-American History Month. And whereas, the event will have the theme of "Cultural Renaissance in a Post-Pandemic World," and will include acknowledgements related to the scholarship and youth development activities of FACO with crafts for children hosted by the Oceanside Public Library. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Filipino-American History Month in the city of Oceanside, and urge all residents and visitors to attend the 20th Annual Oceanside Filipino Cultural Celebration this Saturday, again, October 9, where you will enjoy the culture, history, foods, music, and dances of one of the most important communities of our diverse city of Oceanside. Give it to you, Dory. Okay, all right. There we go.
Hello. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Esther Sanchez. Thank you for your support. It's 20 years that we have started this, and of course, it takes a village to put an event. So our vice pres-- I mean, our president, head of President of Filipino-American Cultural Organization, and we have our director, Nelly Taguba, and we have Imelda, who's been working so hard helping us to put together all the vendors and sponsors. And we have Meli Sivish. She's been in this organization since the beginning. And of course, her granddaughter, we always bring our kids with us. We have to drag them with us. And CJ, been with us, oh my gosh, worked so hard. And of course, I want to thank you, Sherry. Where are you? Right there. 20 years ago, Oceanside Public Library has been in the beginning with us, from Debbie, Sherry, and then the staff in the public library. It's been a great year, the last 20 years. Of course, we skipped the 2019, 2020, I'm sorry, 2020 because of pandemic, but we are rolling for the good, good day on Saturday. I hope to see you all.
And I just want to let you know that, you know, we want to invite everyone here, and please share, because we have 44 vendors that are coming in, committed with us this Saturday, and we will have a lot of cultural dances, entertainment, and we do have a surprise, surprise, surprise entertainment with a celebrity twist. So, you know, please come and join us, and it's going to be fun from 11 to 4 on Saturday. And I thank you, Mayor, your support, and everyone here, and I thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, everyone, come for the food, stay for the music and entertainment, but definitely for the food. You have to do this. Oh, back with the glasses. Could I please have the folks from the California Surf Museum and also Tom Morey, please come They have things to show us, show and tell, I guess. And listen, we have Tom Morey here in the house. This guy was the inventor of the boogie board, the Morey Boogie Board, which I'm sure all of us have been, have used, even me, which made it possible for-- it doesn't matter if you have any kind of, you know, if you can stand on a board, you could always body surf, and that just opened up the world of surfing to everyone, and has for 50 years, believe it or not. So, here we go. Not yet, almost. Okay, so for all the others that know surfing, this is a beauty, okay? So, proclamation in honor of California Surf Museum's 30th anniversary in Oceanside, 30th in Oceanside. Whereas, the California Surf Museum was founded in 1986 and serves as an international repository and resource center on the lifestyle of the sport of surfing by capturing, preserving, and chronicling its art, culture, and heritage for the education enjoyment of current and future generations. And whereas, the California Surf Museum is celebrating the 30th anniversary of opening the doors in Oceanside, which happened on September 28, 1991, as a valued resource to a lifestyle at the heart of our Oceanside beach culture. And whereas, the museum is currently exhibiting a display commemorating 50 years of the boogie board invented by Tom Morey, who is here with us.
And his wife, Marcia.
And his wife, Marcia, okay. A friend and inspiration to many Oceanside surfers and residents. And whereas, on Saturday, November 6, 2021, the California Surf Museum is hosting its 13th Annual Gala fundraiser with Silver Surfer Award presentations to surf legends Tom Morey, Lynn Boyer, Debbie Beecham, Kim Mayrig, and Joel Tudor, as well as Donald Takayama in memoriam. And whereas, proceeds from this event will help the museum in ensuring that the significant work of the California Surf Museum in preserving surfing's treasures and honoring its culture and history will continue now and for generations to come. Therefore, I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, present this proclamation as a symbol of our appreciation of all the California Surf Museum has done and continues to do to bring honor to our city, and furthermore proclaim November 6, 2021, as California Surf Museum Day in the city of Oceanside, encouraging all residents and visitors to attend and support the California Surf Museum's 13th Annual Gala fundraiser on that day. So Mike, I'm going to give this to you so you can introduce everyone.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you very much, Mayor Sanchez, and the city council for making that proclamation to the museum. And I want to present our guest of honor here, Tom Morey. And we actually have an exhibit at the museum, as Mayor suggested, that is open now that shows all his progression of his boards that he made. This is the first board that he made, the first boogie board, and from there it's blossomed into, you know, from the yellow board right there, yeah, and then to the surfboard right here. So he's really evolved his progress. He's a very talented person too. He's also a musician, so he's played with a lot of great people. So I'll turn this over to Tom. I know he's anxious to talk here.
Okay. Whereas, this is the 50th anniversary of Tom Morey Boogie Board this year. Whereas, Tom Morey was an early pioneer in the modern surfing era and an influential surfboard designer and innovator, inventing the wingtip, a, yeah, Coen lift nose?
That's right.
Okay. And whereas, Tom Morey created the Tom Morey Invitational Nose Riding Championships, the first professional surfing contest held at Ventura Point. And whereas, Tom Morey created the first commercial interchangeable fin system.
That's right.
And whereas, Tom Morey is regarded as a master musician of many instruments, including ukulele, drums, and guitar, having performed professionally with musicians such as Dizzy Jalapsie, Stu Williamson, Bud Shank, and Conti Condoli. Yeah. And whereas, Tom Morey engineered the essence of today's softboard manufacturing technology.
That's right.
And whereas, in 1971, Tom Morey invented the Morey Boogie, the first and most popular bodyboard of all time, of all time. And whereas, Tom Morey designed the Swizzle Board, a parabolic-shaped longboard design in his factory on Cleveland Street here in the city of Oceanside. Whereas, Tom Morey and his original boogie board were inducted into the Smithsonian National Museum of American History, Sports Innovation in DC in 2015. And whereas, Tom Morey introduced more people to the joy of wave riding than any other single person in the world. And whereas, in honor of his many contributions to surfing, the California Surf Museum is honoring Tom, a friend to many Oceanside and local surfers, with a display of his many works. Therefore, I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, do hereby urge all Oceanside residents and visitors to visit the California Surf Museum and its Tom Morey display, and pay due honor and respect to Tom Morey, a man who changed the world for so many people, allowing for all of us to experience surfing here in Oceanside and everywhere.
Thank you, dear soul, and members of the leadership of the city of Oceanside, and I want to help bring your awareness back to something so important that you do. When the sons and daughters of this country go off to the various countries to do what we have to do to help keep us a civilized planet, the last thing, the most precious thing perhaps for many of them, is the city of Oceanside, its inhabitants, and its frills and restaurants, and its beaches, and its attitude. And you stand for the United States of America in their minds so strongly. I hope you realize that and recognize that you do a thank, you are due a thank you from them, from me, through me. So again, thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and, well, I'm working on that. Thank you, thank you very much, and city council. We have people here from the museum, both on the board of directors and volunteers. Starting on my right at the end is Larry Bauma, Louise Bauma, his wife, she is on board of directors, Jane Smouse, one of the founders of the museum, some 30-plus years ago.
36.
36, yeah. John Redlinger, our secretary of the board of directors, and Swizzle Board here, cat speaker himself right now. And then my name is Mike Burner, I'm on the board of directors also. Tara Torburn is our bookkeeper, Patty Serrano.
Creative director.
Yes.
Creative director.
Creative director, yes, excuse me. Patty Serrano. Kevin O'Keefe and his wife Donna. Kevin's a volunteer, extreme, extraordinary. So again, thank you very much.
Two more people here.
Oh, I missed, okay. We got Tom's wife, Marcia, you know? You have a lady here that was at the early days of bodyboarding, Debbie Colwell, and she is the largest and most prominent manufacturer of that product in the world, and she's operating right here out of Oceanside. You also have the largest and most influential ding repair guy, whose last name I do not name, but we all know, but we all know him as Moose. Moose, are you here? Could you stand up?
I'm here.
Here, Moose. Thank you very much, Moose. Okay, again, well, thank you again for acknowledging us and honoring the California Surf Museum and Tom Morey here, and proclaiming November 6, 2021, as California Surf Museum Day in Oceanside. Surfing has been an integral part of our history of Oceanside, evolving into world-class surf contests going on now, and in fact, I think even the Olympic champion, women's champion, was here surfing in a contest here recently. So that's how it's evolved here, and a lot of different people and a lot of events have been going on here. So we also have, as the mayor said, our 13th Annual Gala coming up, and that's our primary fundraiser for the museum. We depend upon membership and donations like this to keep the museum going. And without that, through your support, we wouldn't have that. So we, again, we appreciate everything that you have done for us, Mayor and council, and thank you again for this honor and the opportunity to be a part of this community.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mike. We're going to take a picture. I hope we can all be including, especially the boards here, no?
Can you get it ready?
And of course, Tom.
Can you get it off?
Can you do it again without my glasses? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tom. Thank you so much for coming. We've got K O C T in the house. Come on down. Everyone, right? K O C T, and this is 40th anniversary. Lot was happening back then in the day, and I have to say that the vision for K O C T about community television and having access and, you know, ensuring that the community can see the art through filming that our kids, young youth and adults are able to capture, because this truly is kind of a history, oral history of Oceanside. So, so excited here. I'm going to go ahead and do the proclamation, and then I'm going to hand it to you, and you can, you can tell us who all is here. Okay. Proclamation in honor of K O C T's 40th anniversary. Whereas, K O C T Television began as an idea by Bob Botzwich, an ad hoc committee of volunteers and the Oceanside City Council in the early 1980s to record city council meetings, and with the growth of cable television came an opportunity for funding a separate nonprofit public access channel, Oceanside Community Television Corporation, K O C T. And whereas, K O C T is responsible for providing public, educational, and government access programming on Cox Channels 18 and 19, as well as on AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. And whereas, K O C T provides live coverage and replays of city council meetings, produces and airs documentaries, news briefs, public service announcements, talk shows, and a variety of other community programs. And whereas, K O C T augments its professional staff with volunteers and student interns from local high schools and colleges, which provides invaluable experiences for those interested in telecommunications careers. And whereas, K O C T's award-winning programs and services have brought national recognition and acclaim to Oceanside's channel, K O C T, the voice of North County. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Oceanside, wishes to express its appreciation for K O C T's dedication and commitment to the citizens of Oceanside and all of North County, and for their unwavering efforts in providing exceptional coverage. On behalf of the Oceanside City Council and city staff, we congratulate K O C T Television on its 40th anniversary, and wish K O C T many years of success.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I'm Carly Starr, I'm the executive director, and right next to me is our board chair, Gerald Hampton. On the scene with Eileen, right here, and CJ Demento, they're both board members. And we have our post-supervisor, Tyler Tran, and our programmer, Sterling Anno. And over here, we have Linda Williams, our show producer, our head show producer, and station manager, woo-hoo, Angela Miranda. We're proud of our accomplishments over the last 40 years and the tremendous hard work that we have dedicated ourselves to promote the city of Oceanside's government proceedings, projects, programs, and events, along with serving our city partners, fellow nonprofits, and local community through the power of technology, education, dedication, and a whole lot of love. It's been a great partnership, and we thank you so much and look forward to the future. I'm Carly Starr, I did. We have not applied for one, but we do have one with you, a wave award with the singing Peter Weiss over there. Oh, we won a gold and telly this year. Yeah, a bronze and a gold telly. And that's about it on our part. We look so forward to working with all of you and what the future brings, and we're so proud to serve this city. We're truly a new place, and Peg Channels are awesome, aren't they, Gerald?
Yes, they are.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. My name's Gerald Hampton, and once again, as the chairman of the board, I'm truly humbled and happy to be here and part of the KLCT family. I'm happy to have fellow board members, Eileen and CJ, here as well. You know, our job is simple. We primarily make sure that the station, as a 501(c)(3), is maintaining their compliance with our governing documents, making sure the financials are there, and of course, that great thing called fundraising. But the lion's share and truly the heart of the station is with the staff, and they are led by the dynamic Ms. Carly Starr, who has done a fantastic job with the station, and Linda as her cohort, and then of course, Angela and the rest of the team here. They have truly done a fantastic job, and I just want you to know what a fantastic jewel we have in the North County in this station. So lastly, I'll shut up and just say, because I mentioned fundraising, if you're not a friend of KLCT, please go to the website and consider joining this dynamic group.
And thanks to the rest of Team K O C T that couldn't make it here tonight. Thank you for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Carly, and the K O C T family. City of Oceanside couldn't make it without you. What we're able to do in getting the word out to our community couldn't happen without K O C T. When election time comes along, how do you know about the candidates? Will you tune into K O C T, and you're able to hear their words about what they stand for, and you're able to judge for yourself, looking at, you know, the person's face and, you know, and hear those comments. So Carly, you've done so much for us, and I really, really thank you, and congratulations on 40th anniversary. So everybody needs to go. When is it again?
It's, uh, Friday night.
Yes.
We're sold out. We scalping tickets in the parking lot.
Okay, scalping out in the parking lot, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we've got one more, last but not least. We have Ivy Ranch Park Association in the house. Come on down, please. Hey, Tanya.
Hi. How are you?
Here they come. And again, this is 40th anniversary. So this is a proclamation in honor of Ivy Ranch Park Association 40th anniversary. Whereas, in 1981, a steering committee proposed the establishment of a park at the 20-acre site of the Ivy Ranch estate, a park that would be fully accessible to both the disabled and abled. And whereas, the park in-- And whereas the park envisioned by the steering committee would provide an environment for all groups of the area's population to interact and relate to one another irrespective of their disabilities, providing a broad range of recreational and educational opportunities accessible to all, reflecting a sensitivity for the special needs of the disabled. And whereas the park is managed by an independent nonprofit agency, the Ivy Ranch Park Association, responsible for developing, administering and maintaining the park and its programs. And whereas Ivy Ranch Park Association offers many services to the community, disabled and abled, adults and children, including therapeutic horseback riding, childcare programs and in-home respite. And whereas the Ivy Ranch Park Association also offers summer programs and a chance to be with horses, learning safety, handling, grooming, tacking and riding. Additional instruction in ground training, vaulting, humane education, feeding, basic veterinary care, housing and daily care of horses is also part of each week. And whereas on October 16th, 2021, Ivy Ranch Park Association is celebrating its 40th anniversary and the 40th anniversary of Western Hoedown, its annual major fundraising event that offers riding demonstrations, live music, barbecue, silent auction, kids' corral, hay rides, raffle prizes and a VIP lounge. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2021, as Ivy Ranch Park Association Day in the city of Oceanside, in honor of their 40 years of service to the many residents of Oceanside, abled and disabled, and urge all residents and visitors to attend the 40th Annual Western Hoedown in support of this critical Oceanside program and to learn more about its many offerings.
It's a very special day to be here in front of you. My name is Tanya, I'm the executive director, and instead of naming all these amazing people, let me tell you who they represent. Obviously, I have my board members here. They are the, the structure and the backbone of who we are and the guidepost. Then I have staff here who make every day happen with all the programs that we have. We serve over 200 individuals every week, and those are children ages 2 all the way through seniors over 80, able-bodied and special needs, veterans, active duty. So it's a very wide range that we serve. And then I actually have parents here of children that have been in our program, both our therapeutic writing, our daycare program, and then volunteers who have grown up into our program and now who have launched into similar activities like Ivy Ranch. And then I have the backbone also represented, which is, excuse me, our volunteers. We have over 850 volunteers that spend 17,000 hours every year helping us support the programs that we have. It's amazing what we do. We have a million-dollar budget, we have 52 staff members, but over 850 volunteers who make everything work. So we are proud to represent the special needs community, active duty military veterans, and everybody who comes together at Ivy Ranch. If you haven't been out there, we often hear that I've driven by you 1,000 times and never knew you were right there. We are right across from the Mission, we have a beautiful 12-acre park, and we have 25 horses there. So if you are ever interested in just driving by, Canine Companions is there on the property, as is Casa de Emparo. The city of Oceanside basically has a jewel there with three different nonprofits that function to serve the community. We are proud to be a part of it. We thank you for the recognition, Mayor Sanchez and all the council members. And we hope that you do join us on October 16th. It's a fun day, whether you're involved with Ivy Ranch now or will be in the future. October 16th is a fun barbecue and fun day to be with and be around. So thank you for the support, thank you for the recognition, we're proud to be a part of this community. Congratulations.
Guess so. Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. We'll see you there. Okay, I think Kathy Nikle's in the house.
Yes. Hi, my name is Kathy Nikle. I'm here on behalf of two organizations, Friends of Oceanside Dia de los Muertos and Main Street Oceanside. I'll do them chronological, so the first one event that I'd like to talk about is the 20th Annual Oceanside Dia de los Muertos Festival. There are three main logos on here, or four main logos on here that I want to talk about. Main Street Oceanside got together with Radio Latina and Milano Flower Farm to start the very first festival in downtown in 2001. So those three are still, still doing the festival again and being sponsors. So that's, that's 20 years straight. They've been there every year. This year, we're gonna have it in downtown. It was downtown until 2008, was moved to the Mission by me in 2009, continued there through 2019. Of course, took a hiatus last year and brought it back to downtown. So it will be held on Sunday, October 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It will be taking over the area from the Museum of Art on Pierview Way all the way down to the underpass. So if you basically think about the farmer's market and the Sunset Market combined, it'll take over those six blocks that day. I'd like to talk about a few things there. It is free, so we want everybody to come down. Milano Farms will be providing flowers for our altars that day, and there will be marigolds for sale on site to, to go to the organization to continue this festival. Porci Empre Car Club started our car show and our truck altars, so they're the original. They started at the Mission, we will be continuing it here. Right now, we have about 40 to 50 cars signed up, and we've gone out to several different car shows, hoping that we will continue that. We will also have a Katrina contest at 2:00 p.m. at the main stage, which will be right where our Sunset Market stage is in Lot 35. We will have our Chuck Cemetery again on Artist Alley like we did in the past, so that'll be fantastic. Lots of great arts and crafts concerning the event. We have several community partners that are helping out with kids' activities. The Adelanto Bookmobile will be there. North County Lifeline out of Crown Heights will be doing arts and crafts, and Studio Ace down in the valley will also be doing arts and crafts for the kids' activities. Live entertainment, sorry. We do have several speakers that will be coming, to include the mayor, thank you, mayor, I appreciate that, and several council members who will be attending. The consulate, congressman and assembly members will be there also, so that's great support. I just want to thank them right now. And then we introduced a new element this year. We are gonna be doing a lowrider bicycle display, so for those bicycle groups that would like to participate, please contact me. There is no fee, we're just asking for some non-perishable food items for our food drive that we do in November and December. And the website is friendsofoceanside dealosmuertos.org. You can sign up to do an altar or participate in any one of these elements. The Katrina contest, though, is show up at 2:00, see what happens. So that is the 20th Annual Dia de los Muertos. And then the following Thursday, we have, again, our returning funness at Sunset Market, our haunted market, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Thursday. We do trick-or-treat that day in the market. The vendors decorate their booths, people come dressed up. We have our parents and children, everybody shows up at the stage, and we do a very short parade for all the little ones, so they can show off their costumes. There will be no contest. I always tell, tell everybody, no contest, it's too hard. They're all, they're all adorable, I can't choose. And then at 8:00, we do an evil laugh and blood-curdling scream contest at the main stage also. So we do invite you to come down. The website for that is, of course, is sunsetmarket.com. So thank you for having me, and I'll be back in a couple weeks.
Thank you, and can you show us your t-shirt in the back, the back of your t-shirt? There it is, Dia de los Muertos.
Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hope to see you at both events.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I think I did see a turkey in there somewhere. Turkey? Do we have? Here we go. So do you propose to get, to help us get rid of the COVID few pounds that we all gained? Or some of us did?
Yes, we're now COVID fit, right? All of you, you had plenty of time to train. Yes, indeed. Anyways, thank you for having me this evening. I'm Kathy Kanane. I'm the race director of the Oceanside Turkey Trot, and I'm the executive director of the Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation. And this evening, I didn't realize that I'm actually, my family moved here 40 years ago in 1980, and it, my, I was remembering the excitement when I bought my first Morey boogie board. I was 14. So this is kind of an exciting evening. And also, the Surf Museum is one of our top 10 recipients of dollars from the trot. Our Oceanside Turkey Trot benefits at least 90 local nonprofits that serve Oceanside residents and the schools. But why am I here? To tell you that we're back. Oceanside Turkey Trot is here to celebrate live in Oceanside. Registration has opened up and is available at oseinturkeytrot.com, and we're looking forward to seeing all of our local friends and families on Thanksgiving morning. We will all be moving our feet before we eat. This year, this lifestyle goal is more important than ever. The CDC report was published last week, you probably all saw it in the newspaper. The U.S. rate of obesity now is at a record 33%. Obesity is a disease that's mainly preventable and managed with physical activity and choosing nutrient-rich foods and eliminating sugar-sweetened beverages from their diet. I hope that all of you can check out our website at oseinturkeytrot.com and learn about our wonderful sponsors that made it possible this year. Tri-City Medical Center is our presenting sponsor. The city will be helping us out this year, which we so appreciate, and the county. In addition to that, Front Wave is coming in as a co-sponsor, we have Dick's returning, and of course, Visit Oceanside. This event cannot happen without the support of these sponsors and the city council here. So I just want to thank you and invite you all to register at oseinturkeytrot.com. Get those teams going. Austin Weis told me a week ago that they hoped to be their largest team, close to 500 again this year, which is fabulous. And I know that Peter Weiss is in shape, because he's training for the Iron Man, and...
He's representing all of us, so...
We want to have you all there. I, I did the double peaks last week, and the mayor of San Marcos was there.
Oh, I'll be there, but he's gonna be representing us.
All right. And she says she runs the trot every year, the mayor of San Marcos. So hopefully, everybody can get their families out there and come and have a great time and move your feet before you eat, and thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, so now we have closed session reports. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. Council met in closed session to discuss Item 1, Conference with Labor Negotiator on the Status of Negotiations with the Police Officers Association. Item 2, Conference with Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation in the Workers' Compensation Matter of Sebron versus City of Oceanside. And Item 3, Conference with Real Property Negotiator Involving the City-Owned Building Located at 217-219 North Coast Highway. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Oceanside Theater Company. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property. There's no action under the Brown Act that is required to be reported at this time.
Thank you. We are now on consent items, calendar items. It's Item, Items 5 through 21. Is there, are there any requests to pull by the public?
No members of the public have pulled any items.
Any requests by the council?
Move approval.
There's a motion to approve by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Deputy Mayor Ryan Keim. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're now on general items, item number 22. This is the update on the American Rescue Plan Act spending plan and approval of expenditures from the lost revenue appropriation of $12.3 million. We have a report by Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. I'm gonna give you a brief update on implementation of the American Rescue Plan Act spending plan that your council approved on August 4th of this year. As you mentioned, staff recommends that the city council receive an update on the American Rescue Plan Act spending plan and approve spending from the lost revenue appropriation of $12.3 million. The city of Oceanside was allocated $32.3 million of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The first installment of these funds totaling $16,173,257 was received by the city on May 17th, 2021. The second installment will be received in May of 2022. And as I mentioned, on August 4th of this year, the council approved a spending plan for that first installment. On the screen is that approved spending plan. It includes spending in categories such as building stronger communities, that includes homelessness and investing in disadvantaged communities. It's supporting the public health response, addressing negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, and investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, as well as the replacement of lost public sector revenue. The first request of this item is to, is to ask for approval to spend $2.3 million of that lost public sector revenue on a few projects, namely, the Civic Center Cooling Tower. This was necessary, and originally, the general fund was identified for this project. Staff recommends using ARPA lost public sector revenue funds instead. Secondly, about $1.9 to $2 million of fire apparatus funding. This year, we moved fire apparatus into the fleet replacement fund, and a replacement schedule's been created that will require an annual general fund contribution. But to make the initial replacement purchases, staff proposes using $2 million of ARPA lost public sector revenue funds instead of general fund. Another $80,000 is being recommended, because two grants are ending in 2021 for our library. Without this funding, the teens' work program and a part-time librarian working in the newly-created hub would go away, so that's what this $80,000 would do. Lastly, from the lost public sector revenue, we have the Marshall Street Swim Center renovations, a request. This was approved, actually, as Item 12 of the agenda, so this is more of an update. But this $175,000 would supplement a grant of $50,000 from the county, and that would help complete these renovations. Also want to give you some updates on previously approved projects, including the sand retention project. The city council approved a $43,000 amendment to its agreement with GHD for various sand retention projects. Staff recommends using the ARPA allocated funds instead of the general fund for that contract. $602,000 of the $1 million allocated to pay for the startup and operations of the city's motel voucher program. Originally, the general fund would pay for this, would have paid for this, but we are recommending that ARPA replace that funding and pay for that instead. Another update on the broadband study, which was approved by council in the original ARPA spending plan. A contract with Nutter Consulting for a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 has been administratively executed, and the study is underway. The study will identify areas in Oceanside where there is insufficient broadband or there is limited access. Further, it will propose strategies to bridge these gaps, and this study will include interviews with key community stakeholders and a digital equity workshop open to community members. A business grant program was also approved as part of the August 4th American Rescue Plan Act spending plan. $300,000 was allocated to this existing program to help continue to help support our local businesses. Part of the spending plan was money allocated for storm drain projects, the first project that... The first project that we've identified is the Butler Street Storm Drain Project. In lieu of SB 1 gas tax funds, staff will use ARPA funds to remove and replace approximately 160 linear feet of 18-inch failing corrugated metal pipes and to remove and replace two catch basins at Butler Street. Also included in the plan was $250,000 to support the public health response. These monies have been fully expended to cover staff time related to COVID response and the COVID leave program. Part of the spending plan also included an additional $37,000 for the Civic Center Fountain Dining Area to extend that through 2021. This will actually be a lot less than the $37,000 because this is an at-cost agreement, and after further review, it looks like, more like, it's going to be like $14,000 instead of $37,000. So that's good news. That's more money that we can allocate to other projects and programs. We also allocated $200,000 in investing in disadvantaged communities through parks and recreation and neighborhood programs. Staff is developing these programs that will launch later this fall. The programs are being developed to meet the needs identified by the community and are continued outreach and engagement. And I'll discuss more about that outreach and engagement in a bit. We also allocated $350,000 in ARPA monies for grants to nonprofits negatively impacted by the pandemic. The guidelines for this program are still under development, and once those guidelines are finalized, we'll share them with council, and the program will be launched. But at this point, no monies have been expended, and the program has not yet launched. Lastly, the special events allocation of $150,000 to support special events aimed at promoting Oceanside's local economy. These funds will be used to offset city charges for special events, including costs associated with street closures and staffing. And to date, none of these funds have been expended, but staff anticipates that they will begin to be drawn down this fall. I'd mentioned the community outreach and engagement. This effort is being led by Neighborhood Services. Staff continues community outreach to seek feedback and better understand the community's desires for this funding. We're seeking consultants to conduct statistical, unbiased community surveys and provide community engagement workshops that respond to a diverse community. And we're taking advantage of other opportunities, such as community events, established community groups, and ongoing outreach efforts by other community partners, such as the school districts and the Vista Community Clinic, to also engage in outreach to the community. This slide is a summary of where we are in spending the city's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act monies. We essentially have four years to spend this money, and the city is making excellent progress in implementing the plan to spend down the funds. As I mentioned, staff recommends that the city council receive an update on the American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan and approve the spending from the lost revenue appropriation. And I'm here to answer any questions, as well as a lot of department directors and staff.
Thank you. The city has five years to spend the last dollar by December 31st, 2026.
Yes, yes, yes. And it needs to be, some of it needs to be committed before then, but yes, you're correct.
Yes, by 2023, I think, or 2024, and then 2026.
Yeah.
Do we have any requests to speak by the public?
Yes, we do. We have one request to speak from Max Disposti.
Procedural questions? Can I have, can I ask a question without going my time? Or I cannot do that? I don't know if I'm allowed to.
I'll call you up after you speak so that you can ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Max Disposti, resident of the City of Oceanside, also in a nonprofit sector here in Oceanside. I received the application to the city, the memo the city sent out in regards to the $350,000 allocation for nonprofits grants. Do you know people, do you know how many people are in the City of San Marcos? 90,000 people. Do you know the allocations for grants for nonprofits, that there are half of the sites of the City of Oceanside? It's actually $3 million. So I would like to know. That's the question later. What was the criteria to allocate only $350,000 to nonprofits? Folks, we do presentations to nonprofits here any day. In Oceanside, we are the second economy in the City of Oceanside and the region of San Diego. And to me, that proposal was an offense and a slap on the face on the fact that many of us had to stay open when the city couldn't even function because rightfully so, you were at home, working from home and meeting here. We had to stay open, serving people, new homelessness, mental health dynamics, crisis, people killing themselves, domestic violence, sexual assault. We had to do it. I lost the staff from COVID. We lost family members, and yet, if I apply for these grants, I have a chance to $10,000 if I get it, because divided by the amount of nonprofit that are in Oceanside, it looks like it averages $2,000 per nonprofit. This is a slap on the face. I don't understand. I respect this research behind, but I feel very humiliated by the fact that there hasn't been brought attention to the work that nonprofits do in our city. I know I sent down an email. Many of you received it today because I was outraged by the fact that we met with the city manager for several times, bringing concern from community of colors and communities here in Oceanside that are truly concerned about the fact that it's not true allocations for nonprofits, and here we are again. Our concern were not listened. That's more infuriating than just not finding us solutions. We all have different views, and we can work together, but not being listened to is the worst thing. Number two, in this grant allocation, there is one matter, one way to define how we're going to get awarded. Our nonprofits need to prove how much they influence the tourist development in San Diego, in downtown Oceanside. What has to do with the work a nonprofit does? That's not my mission. The only mission that pleases the downtown development is Oceanside Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Oceanside, which I'm a big fan of. I used to be a board member for them. But this has nothing to do with nonprofits. So I asked the staff, how did you come to the reasoning of the numbers? Also, why you require me to prove you how to please the tourist area when I had to save lives in Oceanside? So thank you for your time, and I'm sorry for my, I'm still upset. I started yesterday. I can't come down to it because I think it's very offensive, the whole approach, at least about what you're doing with nonprofits in Oceanside. Thank you so much.
So before I go to my colleagues, I want to let my colleagues here on the dais know that when I saw the document, I did not get a chance to read it. And so I forwarded it to several of the nonprofits that I've been working with in the community that have been struggling really, really hard in trying to get services out. I know several members in the community have died because of COVID, and they were severely impacted by it. And so I know that we have, we depend on these nonprofits. We have depended, whether or not, you know, folks here know it or folks out there know it. These nonprofits have been working really, really hard. Yesterday, I got some feedback, and I actually was a little embarrassed because I hadn't read it before sending it out. I did not know that in order to, that one of the criteria that was being proposed was that it be, that it be related to tourism. Now, many of our families, and actually, more than half of our workforce, work outside of Oceanside. They do not work in Oceanside tourism. Many of them are suffering right now. They either lost their job or in between jobs. The average person that I've been talking to in our poverty neighborhoods are trying to figure out which bills to pay. Before COVID, they had money in the bank, they had childcare, they were working, and pretty much, they were living balanced lives. Now, many families are now, have one, two, or even three breadwinners not working. They've lost, they've gone through all their savings, they don't have childcare, and we have a spike in domestic violence. We have a spike in what is happening in the schools, violence with our youth, crime in our neighborhoods. And so we need to get a hold of this. We need to get back to where, at least where we were, and hopefully, better. So when I saw that, you know, this happened, then, you know, I have to say, I just feel that we really need to get on top of this. We are behind. I'm really, I was really heartened by what San Marcos did, $3 million, $3 million for nonprofits. And their position on it was, the program's overall funding objective is to touch every corner of the city by supporting nonprofits working to better the lives of San Marcos residents. Target populations will include underrepresented communities containing, but not limited to youth, low-income individuals and families, seniors, immigrants, and active military and veteran families. So when I see that happening in the rest of our North County communities, I feel like we could do better, and we should even do better than San Marcos. I mean, I always feel like we are better. So I understand that this is still in the process of being developed, and I appreciate that we still have a chance to comment on this and hopefully make it more relevant to our communities. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Number one, typically on an agenda, 6:00 PM would mark public hearing items. Thank God, we don't have public hearing items on this agenda, but my comments are more or less directed at Mayor Sanchez with respect to being the presiding officer over our future meetings. And I'm noticing a habit of violating an ordinance that we have, that presentations and proclamations are to be 15 minutes. And the reason they're supposed to be 15 minutes is to prepare the public who wants to come and drive, you know, miles to come speak on specific items. For example, the rescue plan. Thank you for coming out, Max. And we have a draft community vision plan and overview. We have 11 speakers, which is going to be about, we have how many now? 14 speakers. So if we go three minutes each, well, those speakers who, you know, maybe can't drive when it gets dark or what have you, that were prepared to come during general items, would have to wait to the end of the council meeting. And so what we have is dysfunction, and I just ask that on future meetings, respectfully, if you could please prepare and organize the well-meaning presentations. Every organization we celebrated today was phenomenal. It's amazing. But we need to do it in a more orderly way so that the public can have opportunity to speak, and we can have more order. And I think that the City of Oceanside deserves that. So that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing I want to say is, I hear the comments on the nonprofit dynamic. I respectfully disagree. I think the City of Oceanside does a phenomenal job of assisting nonprofits, not just with COVID, which we had a, you know, I think it was over $1 million we gave to businesses and nonprofits to help sustain them. But in our harbor, we have nonprofits that cater to children, and we give rebates on rent. The Chamber, the Vance that supports military. I mean, everywhere you look in our city, we give and give and give, and we can give more, but it's important that we don't discount all the efforts we do globally on an annual basis to the hundreds of nonprofits in our city, including the Art Center, including the Art District. We give, 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 and that's a blessing. That's our job. It's your resources. We need to give them back out to support. So I disagree with those comments, but if there's a consensus on the dais that we have more funds available for nonprofits, I'm for it if we can afford it and we have the resources. But I don't want to discount everything the City of Oceanside does for nonprofits because we do a lot. We do a lot. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
The ARPA program is, it's going to be, it's a flexible program. We don't have the guidelines yet. We're still waiting for community feedback. So again, there's going to be oversights and mistakes made, I think. You know, and that's what we have to keep evaluating and ask what priorities are, what we're missing. But I do agree, we could, nonprofits are a priority. I've had a lot of outreach, and this is our time on council to provide all of our input, work together, and adjust things within that plan. So with my colleagues' support tonight, I'd be comfortable at least raising that $350,000 to $1 million, giving staff more leverage while we do outreach, and then we can reevaluate and see how that money's been given out, what metrics we're using to give that out, and see what other needs are after that. But at this point, I'd be happy to make a motion to increase that out of the lost revenue to $1 million, and then approve staff's recommendations.
Second that.
Councilmember Weiss.
I have a question for staff. Whether it's $350,000 or $1 million going to nonprofits, it's my understanding that that money has to be used directly for offsetting lost funds due to COVID. It can't simply be used to just expand nonprofit programs.
That is correct, and it's a misreading of it, and we can clarify. It was never our intention that it be dependent on an impact to tourism. That is a misunderstanding of what our intent was. And as I said, we don't have a program right now. We have a draft program that we're working on, and we're open to feedback one way or the other, so.
Thank you. Then I'll support that as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that as part of the criteria for the ARPA funds, it is investing in disadvantaged communities. So the City of Oceanside is looking, we have been talking with the community, the community has been talking to the city manager's office about the huge demand for additional parks and rec programming and space. And that's what I believe why they chose to, the city manager's office decided to discuss in the proposal, investing in disadvantaged communities through parks and rec and neighborhood programs. We have a huge need, and I'm hoping that we will kind of quicken the pace for getting that data, because, you know, this past weekend, I went to Popeyes here on Oceanside Boulevard, and it was closed because of staffing needs. You know, I mean, obviously, something is happening here in Oceanside. There's a huge imbalance. We had a job fair, and it was, it was pretty successful, but we need to get more to find out what is happening with our community. If gentrification, if people think that gentrification is the answer, that, well, they're just going to move out and maybe we'll just have other people who can really afford living in Oceanside or afford going through another pandemic, well, I think that that is really a bad idea to just sit and do nothing, to assist our working families here. Again, more than half of our working families, of our workforce, go outside of the City of Oceanside. And I would like to see us really focus on trying to better our economic development, better the opportunities for our families, get that childcare that everyone seems to really need to be able to go back to work. So I have to say, I understand completely what Max said and others in the community, other leaders in the community. This is something that is very, very critical to our economic well-being. So I'm going to support the motion. I'm sorry, Councilmember Jensen wishes to speak. My apologies.
I'm going to support the motion as well to raise the amount to $1 million, and I'd like to remove the impact to tourism clause. And that did jump out at me when I read it regarding the nonprofits. That little impact to tourism kind of seemed out of place to me.
We can work on the language to make sure that it's more clear. It's not, it was, it's actually, we're trying to keep the program in alignment with what the ARPA guidelines are, and the ARPA guideline specifically talks about negative impacts to the economy. So we're trying to make linkages there. But we, like I said, this is a draft program, and we can definitely, we'll make some revisions, we'll share it with council, we'll take feedback, and we'll move quickly, but also with an, with open ears and an open mind in terms of getting that implemented, so. And on the amount, the original recommendation included another $350,000 from that second tranche, so increasing it now is not.
A million now.
A million now, yeah. That's, that's what I'm hearing. So we will use lost public sector revenue if that's the motion that passes.
Right, and thank you. Thank you so much for saying that, because I agree with that. I read it once, I was alerted to that language being in there. I looked at it, and I said, exactly, it says that. There are several places where there are mentions to criteria, and that that was one of them. So I would like to have that removed as well. And what I want to say is this, if, I know, I know Deanna has been here from Riverside, what, three years now? Is it three years?
Mayor, actually, I've worked for the city since the beginning of 2016, and two years I was city manager.
Okay. And Michael, you've been here for a couple of years? Yeah. So you may not know the nonprofits. You may not, I mean, we had a city manager that was here for, you know, whatever it was, 25-plus years, and we had a Neighborhood Services Director who was here for, I don't know, 30 years. So they really knew the relationship, they had these relationships, they knew. So they really knew the relationship, they had these relationships, they knew exactly what was happening in the communities. And so we have that kind of whole. And so I think what I'm asking here is that you work harder to reach out to the community to find out what it is that they need to be able to then say, okay, this is what needs to be in the qualifications. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Five oh.
Thank you. We're now on item number 23. This is presentation of the draft community vision, which outlines organizing themes and guiding principles that provide direction for the updating of the city's general plan and the preparation of associated long-range planning documents. For example, South Moro Hills community plans, smart and sustainable corridor plan. And this is a report by Russ Cunningham.
Mayor, may I do a disclosure before the presentation starts?
This is general items. So are you not going to be able to participate in the?
No, I am, but I want to disclose why. Because we're not making any policy decisions or giving any direction with respect to the community vision plan, South Moro Hills, nothing like that today. This is just a presentation. And so because of that, I can sit in this meeting, but when that decision is made in the future, because I live in South Moro Hills, I will be recusing myself. But because we're not making those policy decisions today or influencing that whatsoever, I'm going to participate and listen in. And I just wanted to let the public know that. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Cunningham.
I'm Russ Cunningham with the city's planning division. I'm one of four planners tasked with delivering a comprehensive update of the city's general plan. I want to acknowledge my teammates, senior planner Rob Dymahowski and associate planners Shannon Vitale and Stephanie Cervantes. Rob is shepherding the housing element update along with the South Moro Hills community plan. Shannon is taking point on the healthy, livable and equitable community element as well as the active transportation plan and the trails master plan. Stephanie is guiding the preparation of the vital and sustainable resources element and exploring how best to reconcile this element with the city's draft subarea plan. Our efforts have been overseen and guided by city planner Jeff Hunt, who's been instrumental in keeping this effort focused and moving forward. We're here tonight to introduce and discuss the draft community vision, which outlines a series of organizing themes and guiding principles that provide a foundation for specific goals, policies and actions that will be promulgated in the updated general plan and related long-range planning documents. A key project deliverable and milestone, the vision is meant to essentially set the course for the detailed work ahead, establish expectations as to the kind of community that Oceanside aspires to be in the future, and hold our project team accountable for delivering plans that reflect community values and priorities. With us tonight remotely via audio is Rajiv Batia of Diet and Batia, our principal consultant. Rajiv may be better equipped to respond to some of your questions and comments, particularly those that are related to best practices and state regulations and guidelines. Diet and Batia has been an excellent partner and great resource. If I say anything off-base tonight, Rajiv is here to correct the record. So this evening, we ask that you let us know if we are on track. We're seeking your input on the completeness, consistency and clarity of the draft vision. We want to know if there are other community values and priorities that should be incorporated into the vision. We ask that you let us know if there's anything we can do to add to the cohesiveness of the document. We ask that you point out any ambiguous or inelegant language. The city certainly deserves a well-crafted vision, one that reflects the collective voice of the Oceanside community and one that largely speaks for itself. In May 2019, this body adopted the first phase of the city's general plan update, which introduced an economic development element, energy and climate action element, and the city's first climate action plan. These documents provide important policy direction for the second and culminating phase of the general plan update. So recognizing that the city is approaching build-out in the traditional sense that extending infrastructure into peripheral areas is costly and often inefficient, that sprawl has many adverse environmental impacts and that infill and redevelopment can revitalize our urbanized areas and create synergies between housing and employment-related uses. The community encourages us to facilitate efficient land use, recognizing the need to reduce VMT, vehicle miles traveled and associated emissions. The community has expressed support for the expansion of mobility options, including pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, microtransit service and incentives for electric vehicles. The community sees the benefits of a diverse local economy that provides a variety of job opportunities, increases resilience to economic downturns, ensures that Oceansiders can access essential goods and services within the city, and keeps dollars circulating within our local business community. The community recognizes the need to provide housing opportunities to all households across the income spectrum to meet our regional fair share of housing demand, to alleviate homelessness, to expand the market for local goods and services and invite employers and qualified workers to make Oceanside their home. And the community wants to see us prioritize visual quality, recognizing that an aesthetically pleasing community and environment supports public health and security, economic development and community building. These priorities have, for the most part, been reiterated and expanded upon in the community outreach that we have done in support of Phase Two. We are encouraged by the level of consensus that has been forged on how best to accommodate growth and change, though we understand that the community is very interested in the details and is largely reserving judgment until these details have been provided. I'll take the opportunity to quickly remind the council and the community of the scope of GPU Phase Two. We are preparing seven general plan elements, the titles of which we'll discuss in a moment. We are preparing a community plan for the South Moro Hills agricultural area in an effort to balance allowances for housing and agritourism with the community's desire to preserve farmland. We know that this is a abiding concern of many members of our community and we know there are those here this evening to speak on the future of the South Moro Hills area. We do hope that we can keep the lens wide and broad and have a robust discussion on citywide issues as well. We are supported by grant funding from Caltrans in our preparation of a specific plan that seeks to channel future housing and employment growth into the city's major commercial corridors, building upon concepts established in the Coast Highway Incentive District. We are updating and consolidating the city's pedestrian and master, excuse me, pedestrian and bicycle master plans into a single active transportation plan. And we are preparing a trails master plan that will focus on safe and convenient linkages between city facilities and the neighborhoods they serve. With our project timeline being somewhat challenged by the pandemic, delays in regional traffic modeling, time and resources that have been devoted to the South Moro Hills community plan and some other factors, we have still made considerable progress since kicking off GPU Phase Two in late February of last year. We've hosted over 50 community meetings. We've met with subject experts, community members, of course, conducted several online surveys, engaged in dozens of ad hoc conversations with individuals and small groups. We've developed and maintained a well-received project webpage and assembled an interested parties list of over 1,600 stakeholders who receive regular e-blasts, updating them on project status and opportunities to get involved. In accordance with state law, we've prepared an updated housing element, which this body adopted on the 16th of June. We are currently refining this document in response to comment from the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, with the hope that HCD will certify the update before the end of the year. We are in the process of preparing, or excuse me, we have prepared a policy framework for the South Moro Hills community plan, which was reviewed by this body on April 28th. We're currently working on additional community outreach on this component of the project. We prepared a series of in-depth technical studies addressing local and regional market conditions, land use and community facilities, environmental resources and existing conditions and trends within the boundaries of the smart and sustainable corridors specific plan. And we have secured additional grant funding. We're receiving a $500,000 grant from HCD to elevate the corridors plan from a policy document to a regulatory document that will provide for streamlined entitlement processing and sequel review. All told, we've received roughly $1.2 million in state grant funding, which amounts to nearly 40% of our total project budget. The vision has been principally informed by what we've heard from community members, subject matter experts and city staff. We have extensively documented community input on our project webpage, onwardoceanside.com. You'll find summaries and recordings of community meetings on our webpage along with survey results. I'm prepared to speak in more detail on the community input that we've received over the past 18 months. The closing section of the vision entitled "How We Got Here" provides some of this detail as does the Planning Commission staff report, which is attached to your staff report. In an effort to create a general plan that is a resource for all city departments, we've been working closely with our colleagues in other city disciplines and we will continue to do so throughout the planning process. The aforementioned technical studies have also informed the vision. These studies are posted on our project webpage. I'm prepared to speak should you be interested in some of the key findings of these technical studies. I'll also mention that we're guided to some extent by plans that have been adopted recently here in Oceanside. That would include the Coast Highway Corridor Study, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the O-Arts Plan. And going forward, we will assure that the general plan aligns with focused planning efforts that are underway in water utilities, public safety and in other city disciplines. So we're not going to delve into the vision deeply, at least in this presentation. We won't go down to the level of the guiding principles, but I certainly welcome your input on those principles. We'll stay at a high level and focus on these organizing themes. So we hope to demonstrate with this general plan that it doesn't have to be generic, that a general plan can be tailored to a community's unique challenges and opportunities, to its unique character and its unique aspirations. To this end, we're taking a thematic approach to organizing and entitling the various elements of the general plan with these themes representing key community values and priorities. So here are those organizing themes that serve as the titles of our updated general plan elements. Remarkable community, what makes Oceanside unique? How do we preserve and enhance these character-defining features? What more can we do to distinguish Oceanside as a special place to live, work and visit? Efficient and compatible land use, how do we best accommodate housing and employment growth? How do we promote highest and best use or developable properties while ensuring compatibility and promoting synergies between different land uses? Physical, social and digital connections, how do we expand mobility options, community building resources and digital access? Vital and sustainable resources, how do we protect and nurture the city's natural resources to ensure they are available to future generations? Safe and resilient environment, how do we reduce the city's vulnerability to natural hazards, including those exacerbated by climate change? And finally, healthy, livable and equitable community, how do we ensure adequate public facilities and services for all segments of the community? This has been a discussion tonight already. How do we ensure that the public realm is safe, secure and welcoming? So for additional insight on how we are conceiving of these themes, there is in your packet a one-page vision statement with a very beautiful picture of the pier and the coastline on it. And that provides some additional insight into how we're thinking about these thematic elements. Looking ahead, the project team will be developing project alternatives that support a conversation about how best to achieve the vision. There are obviously different ways in which the city can accommodate future growth and change, which approaches best align with community values and priorities, which approaches minimize environmental impacts, which approaches achieve the fundamental objectives of the project. These questions and others will factor into the development of project alternatives and ultimately the selection of a preferred alternative or preferred plan. Given what we see as general community consensus on what is commonly referred to as smart growth, we assume that all of the alternatives will, to some degree, promote infill and redevelopment within our urbanized corridors consistent with the corridors plan. There remain open questions about the future of the South Moro Hills area that could be addressed through various alternatives. How much housing do we want to accommodate in this area and in what configuration? How will agritourism factor into the future of this area? What if any additional infrastructure is needed to serve residential and non-residential development in South Moro Hills? One alternative we will likely explore is maintaining the current residential density maximum in South Moro Hills, which is one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres, but allowing flexibility in how housing can be configured and providing for the transfer of development rights, or TDR, between those who seek to build housing and those who intend to continue farming. In this way, there would be no net increase in the number of housing units that could be built in South Moro Hills and farmland could be preserved in a more formal manner, both through TDR and through zoning standards that would essentially require preservation, farmland preservation in exchange for the ability to cluster housing as a means of limiting the extent and cost of new infrastructure. I'll mention that state preemptions of local land use authority also loom very large in the discussion of project alternatives. Recently adopted state legislation, including Senate Bill Nine, could lead to the densification of existing single-family neighborhoods in Oceanside, which could diminish demand for new housing in our commercial corridors. To mitigate potential impacts on neighborhood character occasioned by new state law, the city can explore new zoning standards that address building height, architectural compatibility, landscaping and other considerations. We will come before you again in a few months with an alternatives report to get your feedback on these options. So with that, I'll say we're looking forward to your input, testimony from our community members and of course, the next steps in this planning process, which I'd be happy to outline for you. Thank you.
Just writing my thought. So any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have 14 speakers registered to speak.
Okay, cool. Let's start.
So we have two podiums. Make your way down as I call your name. Our first speaker is Joe Hill, to be followed by Shewa Slater, to be followed by Jane Marshall, to be followed by Arlene Hammer Schmidt.
How many pairs of glasses do I need, right? Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Joe Hill, 22-year resident of Oceanside. I just wanted to verify that we're not going head-on without any considerable input from the, more input than we've had from the community. I know the notes say that there's going to be a public view and comment in the fall of this year. Well, it's already the fall of this year and we're not, we haven't had any meetings at all. And for the general public in the South Moro Hills area at Melville Bishop or anyplace like that, I know there's been requests and Russ has been asked a few times and we still haven't had those meetings, but hopefully they're coming because we are in the fall now. I think one of the biggest problems I have is that on the, on the alternative page in your, in your handouts, it states that the second alternative is accommodating growth primarily through infill and redevelopment in the city's major commercial corridors, which is fine, and in keeping with the smart, sustainable corridor specific plan, which is also great, and maintaining the status quo. and maintaining the status quo in South Morro Hills. Well, we -- all we hear about though is houses. I guess I really have to know, and I probably never get an answer, what happened to the 65-page Strategic Agriturism Plan? It doesn't say anything about houses in here. It's agriturism, to bring people into the city. I don't get it. Did you guys throw it in the trash? I mean, I could do that at my house, but I just don't get that part. So, I'm hoping that the planning folks and all you folks will realize that, you know, houses is what developers do. Why is our own city quoting the Housing Developer's playbook by saying we're saving and preserving farmland when we're trying to put houses on that farmland? It doesn't make any sense. And there's -- I just got the GIS map back from the city. Do you know there's 321 property owners in the valley? 321. And only 120 of them have Oceanside addresses. So, what's up with that? How does that all tie in to this plan? That's never been brought up, as far as I know. Just questions to ponder. If we've had 50 community meetings, the majority of them were not about South Morro Hills. So, I'm just concerned that we're going head-on with something that needs to have a lot more discussion, and the people who are backing this, the suburban -- the urban planners need to go back to the drawing board and give us a more thorough plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chiwa Slater. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correctly. Chiwa Slater, to be followed by Jane Marshall, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt. Chiwa. Either podium works.
Mayor Sanchez and City Council members, I'm Chiwa Slater. I'm an Oceanside resident, and I've been working for quite a long time with other Oceanside residents who are very much opposed to the South Morro Hills development. The community as a whole is opposed to this development, as was shown in the recent survey, where 74% of us said that preservation of farmland was our top priority, and where 84% of the farmers and the ranchers in the area said the same thing. I just heard a presentation in which it was said that an important part of the community plan is efficient and compatible land use. Taking farmland and turning it into housing is not compatible with the vision of the people of this community, and it's not compatible with the state commitment to preserving the environment and fighting climate change. The land as it stands right now is a carbon sink. We need more carbon sinks, not fewer, because that's a big part of taking care of the threat to our climate. Adding options for housing in this farmland area is only -- is going to put more demand on our infrastructure. It's going to raise our taxes. It's not going to do us any good at all, and it's not going -- if you think people are going to come here for tourist purposes, agriturism, to go to a housing development to pick their pumpkins and their strawberries, it's just not going to happen. This is a lie. And it's a way of getting -- it's a way of making -- putting money in people's pockets who make money off of destroying farmland and turning it into housing that should be in the corridor that's near transportation and doesn't put extra strain on our highways. So, I ask you to please consider -- yes, I agree, we do need a lot more discussion on this, but the people voted. We had an election on the North River Farms issue, and the people voted not to have that. And the South Morro Hills issue just keeps raising its ugly head over and over and over. And I ask you to table -- to get rid of this, push this issue out of existence because it's not going to lead us where we want our city to go.
Thank you, Ms. Slater. Thank you.
Jane Marshall, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Roger Davenport.
Good evening, Council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. Jane Marshall, 32-year resident. You know, this Vision Statement is critically important. I read through it multiple times to just try to put one page with another, and just to be sure that I understood what was going on. I found that it hit the mark on a lot of important issues. For instance, it's trying to promote the community quality of life, economic prosperity, environmental quality, things like that, all the things, good things that we want. It presents creating a vibrant, visually attractive corridors on the east-west avenues we have, and a network of transit bike, pedestrian, pedestrian trails, and other multimodal kind of operations are transit. It talks about creating -- preserving the character of our neighborhoods, all neighborhoods, and also creating seamless edge transitions so that you don't have, like, one thing and then giant things over here. You know, it -- looking at it, forward planning of these kind of things to make it work. It talks about preserving our natural, historical, and cultural diversity, and this is really important for Oceanside, whether it's the Mission, whether it's, you know, the harbor, whether it's El Corazon, really important for us. Yay. It also talks -- the General Plan Elements table on Page 6 is really well-done. I mean, if you look at that, it's really well-done. Yet, where it misses the mark is that it has somewhat confusing and buzzwords that would be open to interpretation. And I give you an example about something called cluster housing and contextual -- I don't know. What do these mean, right? And when you use words that people don't understand what they mean, then, fast forward, planners, junior planners, allow things to happen because somebody says, "Well, this is contextual..." What is it? Housing? And we're like, "What is that?" Okay, well, here, this is an example. Not necessarily in alliance with our general plan. So, the other thing is, is that we have created, over years, a lot of scattered use housing and development patterns. This is the opportunity to stop that. I beg you to stop that. And another issue is, it wasn't well-set about some effort or intention or in the vision to preserve the beaches too. I know there's a lot going on, I don't want to get into that, but that's a big part of our economic prosperity element of this. So, residents, thank you, just support the corridors' plan and stop putting housing in agriturism and --
Thank you. Councilmember -- Councilmember Weiss, did you want to say something? Okay, I must have forgotten to take that off. Next is Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Yes, to be followed by Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Roger Davenport, to be followed by Dennis Martinick.
Good evening. Arlene Hammerschmidt, ruralish Fire Mountain, Oceanside resident for almost 40 years. I really like the organizing themes. I really like them. The city has committed to smart growth, right? We've committed to smart growth. Let's keep it right there. The community-specific plans -- oh, first, adopt the -- adopt the general plan update, and then let's look at the community-specific plans and make sure they align, not conflict, with the new updated general plan. It seems to me like, right now, that some of the concepts that are being presented in this one South Morro Hills-specific community plan are already in conflict with the visions set out. So, we need to set the first umbrella first and make sure everything falls under that umbrella without conflict, please, and sticking to our commitment to smart growth. And I agree, there's no -- is there anything in the agrivision -- what the heck is that called exactly? Anyway, the agrivision plan that conflicts with the proposals of our updated general plan? If not, let's implement that. The whole point of that was to give farmers a way to increase their income, and yet that hasn't happened. So, let's move on that. Let's make it move. Everything else, I think, has pretty much been said. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Roger Davenport, to be followed by Dennis Martinick, to be followed by Joan Bachmann.
Cindy Davenport, historic Loma Alta, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members. I speak as a resident and also as a member of the Sierra Club, so the mention in this draft community vision of smart corridor growth is right on. You'll get a lot of support for that. There's at least 600 Sierra Club members in Oceanside, so smart growth development should indeed be part of our vision. And we should also stress that we need to improve our jobs-to-housing ratio. We need more jobs than we need housing. That is for sure. So, the smart growth development could actually help in that area, in my opinion. It can also help, of course, avoid sprawl development, which wastes our resources, like water and all the rest of the infrastructure that we taxpayers have to cover for a long time for no good reason. We've got plenty of infill areas to use for housing. And of course, we can't avoid talking about the South Morro Hills Draft Community Plan. Mentioning cluster housing as saving farmland, it doesn't make sense, so that should be taken out of our vision. That's not a vision, that's more of a developer's handbook way to proceed in the future. Also, the transfer development rights, the purpose of that is to, again, preserve the area, and so if you're transferring the development rights back into farmland, that doesn't make any sense at all. So, let's be consistent. And for a vision, let's just look at the seal of the city of Oceanside Incorporated 1888, the lower-left quadrant. What is that? That's a cornucopia that is representing our heritage and our economic value of agriculture here in Oceanside. That's our vision. Let's stick to it. Thank you.
Roger Davenport. I live with Cindy, 541 Kraut Street. First of all, let me point out that Russ's second slide was saying that they're asking for direction on the completeness, consistency, and clarity of this. So, Christopher, please pay attention, he's asking for something here from the City Council. Okay, the Vision Plan contains great stuff. It's got all sorts of great stuff, but it also contains some specific contradictions, particularly in regards to South Morro Hills. If you look at it, pretty much every reference that says anything about South Morro Hills, except the one that talks about agriturism, are concepts or policies or even projects that are inconsistent with the Vision Statement. If you look at them, it talks about clustered housing. That, first of all, as Cindy said, doesn't preserve farmland. That's using up farmland to make housing. And I'll give you a hint, talk about contextual planning. Housing and farming are incompatible. People living in a subdivision are going to complain about the farming going on next door if you do that. Okay. Infrastructure improvements, that's another word for sprawl, as Cindy said, and you've received in your package a letter from the Sierra Club about our concerns with this thing. Sprawl is not smart growth. It's a burden to taxpayers. It's just not the right thing to do. Then there's a reference to the pending North River Farms project. Well, I can tell you, that's not part of our vision for the city. That was soundly rejected by the voters, who called for it to be returned to the agricultural zoning that it had for decades, until the City Council voted in 2019 to change it. So, these things, these specific references to things like clustered housing, infrastructure improvements, North River Farms, should be removed from the Vision Plan because these are not vision objects, these are concepts and projects and policies. And I have the -- I get the feeling a lot of times that these things get put into documents, and people say, "Oh, well, you know, it's okay, we've got time to change it later." But then, five years later, you go, "Well, we want to change this, you know? We don't really want this." And people point back, "But five years ago, we put it in the Vision Plan. It's what we wanted, and so we need to get rid of these things now." And so, I would suggest to the City Council that they send information back to the planning people, that they remove these references to the South Morro Hills things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Dennis Martinick, a 42-year resident of South Morro Hills. I hold a PhD in urban planning and a master's degree in economics. Our planning staff has recently completed or made significant progress on five plans based on sound urban planning theory: the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan, the Climate Action Plan, the Economic Development Plan, the Housing Element, which meets state requirements to provide affordable housing, and the Strategic Agriturism Plan. All these are plans based on sound planning theory that will help Oceanside become economically and environmentally sustainable. All of these plans are in conflict with, or actually, the proposed South Morro Hills Community Plan are in conflict, is in conflict with each and every one -- the Diya and Batia Plan conflicts with each and every one of these above plans. Instead of following through with the excellent recommendations and strategy to preserve agriculture laid out in the Strategic Agriturism Plan, the Diya and Batia Plan promotes housing developments that conflict with farming and all of these sound plans. The proposed South Morro Hills Community Plan goes against the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan and encourages sprawl development that will require costly sewers, roads, and services, would cause more traffic congestion and impact evacuation routes. The proposed South Morro Hills Community Plan will result in more vehicle trips and increased air pollution. It will result in housing developments that use more than two-and-a-half times the amount of water that farming does. The proposed South Morro Hills Community Plan would require huge investments in sewers, roads, and public services. The plan's infrastructure cost and feasibility analysis estimates $18 million for sewers, $35 million for roads, not including acquisition costs. These costs will be much higher. Also importantly, the proposed South Morro Hills Community Plan would greatly reduce agriculture and the farm jobs that go with it. It would worsen Oceanside's jobs-housing ratio, which is one of the worst in the county. The council should direct staff to change the South Morro Hills Community Plan to encourage agriculture and agriturism by implementing the already agriculture and agritourism by implementing the already adopted Strategic Agritourism Plan. It has recommendations that are worth giving a chance. The agritourism committee should be reestablished to work with farmers, businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, and the University of California to promote and develop land uses that are truly compatible with agriculture. The Southmore Hills Community Plan should be consistent with the recently committed, completed plans that are based on sound urban planning theory, not conflict with them. Change the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Joan Bachmann, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Leonard Grossberg, to be followed by Trevor Salazar.
Joan Bachmann, Seaside resident. As I said in the last item, I've been here since the last general plan update when we saved our neighborhood. So I'd like to point out that my share represents El Corazon, that is, the 450-acre, actually 465-acre park in the middle of our city that is owned by all the residents of Oceanside. So every resident should feel ownership of that. I do want to question why we had four different groups of volunteers here that had their day in the sun, and it was great, everybody applauded for them, and I have no idea why Mr. Rodriguez thought that was an issue. The issue before us prior was Zoom, which is the way people get home in the daylight and not drive at night. So let's get back to Zoom. No idea what he was talking about. So I want you to reinforce the concepts in this vision plan. This is leading us to policy, and we are leading the way for other cities. This plan actually gives, lets us have it all. So a quote, "This focus on infill and redevelopment will allow for the preservation and enhancement of recreational open space, sensitive habitat, and existing single-family neighborhoods." Okay, we're going to hold everybody to that. This is policy as far as the neighbors are concerned, and we need that to stay true for all neighborhoods. We don't want to displace whole groups of people because they decided to rezone and there's a bunch of gentrification. We have to have plans for those areas, and we need to save our neighborhood. So the best way to grow is on our major roads, as shown in the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan. So rather than make the usual mistake of destroying historic neighborhoods, destroying some of the older parts of the, the city, this Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan puts the growth in the right place, which is on the major road. We're already seeing it on Mission, we can see it in some other areas. We have a nodes and avenues concept. Commercial areas get revitalized. You want more jobs? Revitalize. Get rid of some of the ghost guns and things that are showing up in some of the, the places that need to be repurposed as housing, because those would be avenues. This will pay off when the transportation element is considered. When we start to look at the grid that is west of five and in many of our neighborhoods, it will pay off if our growth is on our major street. And our neighborhoods do provide a lot of housing. We have ADUs and nearby high-density. And with this plan, we meet all the Rhine of goal. We do not need any additional housing in the agricultural zone. We can protect all of our open space and our historic neighborhood. And so we can meet all the Rhine of goals. We, we meet what the county is asking us for, we meet what the state is asking us for by doing this plan. So this is policy as far as we're concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bachmann.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. If you go to a museum sometime and you see a piece of art hanging on the wall, sometimes you stand back and you say, that's nice, really nice. But then you get closer and something digs at you. Something really, really digs at you, you get closer. Well, what happened a few years ago, a lot of years ago, when I attended utility commission meetings, there were utility commissioners that lived in Morel Hills. And they said, as I was the kid, as they called me, that if something came up, could I take and represent them if they passed on? Well, surprisingly, they all have passed on. And I'm the kid that's left with the gray beard now. And what it is, is that there is a system that they wanted me to bring up. They were talking about mandating a sewer, sanitary sewer system into the Morel Hill. When there are alternatives that are nearly waterless, that can take and help save the environment, that could take and very simply enhance the soil that would, could be used, that if you were around, let's say, back in the 1970s, and you followed Abby Rockefeller, who was an environmentalist, a feminist, who took and tried to teach people about something very simple, the Clivus Multrum, who talked about from the 1930s how they took care of human excreta, or commonly known as a composting toilet, where the individuals who, for now, I just looked up as I was sitting there, the cost between $300 and $2,000 a one-time cost, could take care of this while towards a sustainable community, saving water, enhancing soil. They could take and help our environment and our community. This is the perfect time for Morel Hills to be used as a shining example of environmental But what are we proposing? Big ditches, big pipes, going in? It doesn't serve a purpose of thinking and thinking with a heart. Please look at that piece of art.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Leonard Grossberg, to be followed by Trevor Salazar, to be followed by Larry Balma, to be followed by Bianca Bonilla.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Leonard Grossberg. I'm a resident of Oceanside since 2004, and I'm very pleased with the progress the city has made since then and the directions it's heading. I would like to comment on the city's vision statement as it relates to the Southmore Hills Project. We've heard several statements, speakers already today, tonight, on the city's vision plan, and it identifies several elements that are in conflict and inconsistent with the Southmore Hills Project. I'd like to highlight three of them. First, the preservation and restoration of natural habitat. This is a priority specifically addressing the conversion of farmlands to housing. Our state legislature and guideline priorities, that guidelines priorities, housing, farmland preservation, greenhouse gas reduction, climate adaption, and environmental justice. That must be factored into the city's general plan. Furthermore, as recipient of several state grants, the city is expected to further the state's efforts to promote sustainable development and protect our natural resources. Second, continued viability of agriculture. Agricultural lands are specifically called out in Senate Bill 330 as exempt from conversion to housing. Do not be duped by the developers' claims that they are promoting agritourism. Converting farmlands to housing reduces jobs and only increases housing. New housing in the Southmore Hills adds problems and issues that are in direct opposition to the vision plan, as we've heard tonight. Recent studies show that the Southmore Hills development, if built, will cost the city more money than the revenue it will generate in service. This is not sound business, and I don't think the voters will like it. I urge the council to listen to the voters and residents of Oceanside that overwhelmingly voted by 74% to preserve farmlands in Southmore Hills, as well as 84% of farmers and ranchers. I urge the city council to listen, I'm sorry. The final item is the vision plan also identifies the need to mitigate risks of natural hazard. They are fire. I remember the Lilac Fire, and it came down the San Luis Rey River, and this Southmore Hills Project is right in line to that. Flooding, the Southmore Hills Project is in the flood zone. It has not, you cannot mitigate the San Luis Rey River when it has a hundred-year flood. And traffic study, I remember when we were packed up and evacuating during the Lilac Fire, and the traffic was backed up and nobody was getting out. Southmore Hills is only going to add to that. I urge the city council to listen to the voters and residents of Oceanside and oppose any inclusion or development of the Southmore Hills Project in the vision plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Trevor Salazar, to be followed by Larry Balma.
Am I good to go? Thank you. Good evening. I thought people were going to go in front of me, so this is going to make more sense than a few speakers. We've talked a lot about what we don't want tonight, but I would like to provide some potential additions. I've read through the general plan and the city's land use plan, and I would like to stress the importance of prioritizing urban agriculture zones in Oceanside and including that zoning code in our community vision plans. That's something that we do not have at the moment, and the rest of the county, majority of the county, has us beat. Food independence is crucial for the self-determination of communities. I live in Eastside, and there's a rich cultural and historical diet for that community. Allowing spaces for community members to not only consume locally grown produce but to take part in the process of growing it is a form of validation for that community and for that culture. We tend to think of culture as something that precedes us, but it is something that we cultivate every day. So let's take the opportunities to do that. And as climate change continues to get worse, there's never been a more necessary time to start producing food locally. I could talk about the reduction of emissions from shipping all day long, but simply having green zones in our neighborhoods is ecologically beneficial for our air and water qualities. Chihuahua spoke of carbon sinks earlier, and I thought that that was a very astute point, and I think that urban agriculture zones would be a great addition to those sinks. Last year, a great deal of people saw themselves discovering a passion for farming and agriculture as all, we were all locked in our houses. And as food scarcity was a looming threat, I think that providing spaces for that investment to be rewarded would be beneficial ecologically, dietarily, and also culturally, as I spoke before. I read through the document and recall from Section 4 regarding opportunity sites and vacant lots, that there's a great deal of acreage that is zoned for residential but is not optimal given its location to roads and services. So I think that those are prime examples for potential urban agriculture zones. These urban agricultural plots also don't have to be huge spaces. We think of farms and we think acres upon acres, but really, like, a backyard is more than enough in an area. Maybe we get four or five in a neighborhood, and that could be extremely beneficial for the diet ecology and culture of that community. I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Trevor.
Larry Balma, to be followed by Bianca Bonilla, to be followed by Esmeralda Aldez.
Larry Balma, Southmore Hills Association President. I live at 745 Sleeping Indian Road in Southmore Hills, Oceanside. A general plan update for any city is a huge undertaking, especially a city the size of Oceanside with all of our diversity. We have commercial, industrial, airport, train, and bus stations, oceanfront, a pier, harbor, soccer fields, parks, skate parks, and our agricultural area in Southmore Hills. Every other north county city must be envious. I realize how much time and effort it has taken to assemble everyone's input and find ways to reach our goal sustainably and within the city budget. Number one is to provide a safe and secure environment. Even the best plan is based on assumptions on what types of changes will occur in the future. So the plan must also be resilient and sustainable. Electric power, grid and solar, fossil fuel use, vehicular volume, water use, all affect our carbon footprint. Southmore Hills agriculture helps us immensely with Oceanside's carbon footprint. Our existing Southmore Hills Plan has no provision to conserve any agricultural land, period. The proposed Southmore Hills Community Plan will conserve 70% of our land for agriculture. If our Southmore Hills Community Plan was in place when North River Farms came along, they would only be entitled to build about 180 homes on the 214 acres, not almost 600 homes they're entitled. I thank the entire staff in every department of Oceanside for their work with our AgriVision We look forward to work with staff on the continuing general plan update process. I thank everyone for giving their input. This is a draft plan, and we are part of the process.
Bianca Bonilla, to be followed by Esmeralda Aldez, to be followed by Eric Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, city council members, and city staff. My name is Bianca Bonilla. I am a resident of the city of Oceanside. I'm also a mother and a farmer. And I was, I'm also the executive director of Botanical Community Development Initiatives, which is a nonprofit here in Oceanside, and we operate Community Roots Farm. I was excited to see all of the positive themes and principles outlined in the draft of the community vision, but there was something significant missing in this document. I don't see the mention of urban agriculture mentioned anywhere in the document. I do see that agriculture is mentioned as it pertains to the Southmore Hills community, and I am pleased to see that there are efforts to preserve agricultural in that area. But it must be noted that that community is made up primarily of large privately-owned estates, which is not the same as small urban agriculture within our communities that directly supports our people. Our hyper-local food system should be an essential part of any planning of a community. There are goals of building more housing within the city, but where will that food come from to feed everyone? We learned firsthand in this past year and a half what a crisis such as a pandemic, for example, can do to our supply chain. How is Oceanside preparing to be resilient and more self-sufficient in the future? In Section 13, this is stipulated as a concern, as minimizing risks associated with natural and human-induced hazards. Having a resilient, hyper-local food system is vital to minimizing risks for our communities. There are several parts of the vision that would make including urban, including urban agriculture an asset to its goals. Yes, urban agriculture will provide food in the communities where people live. This is vital, but it will do so much more. Urban ag creates green spaces in neighborhoods and are often community hubs. This is one of the goals mentioned in Section 8 of the document, create spaces, resources, and activities that support community building, as well as Section 14, creating safe and secure public spaces. Urban agriculture promotes economic development through job creation and stimulating a hyper-local economy. Urban ag helps to preserve our natural resources through sustainable farming methods. Urban farms create a mosaic of habitats for wildlife, improve the health of the soil, and reduces the heat island effect prevalent in cities. These are relevant to Sections 10 and 11 in the document, to preserve natural resources and to protect water and air quality. It's also widely known, as was mentioned before, that agriculture plays a significant role in reducing greenhouse emissions. By being a coastal cis-city, this should be a highest concern to the city of Oceanside. I was glad to see this as a priority in the document. In the past couple of years, the San Diego Food System Alliance has spearheaded an initiative called the San Diego County Food Vision 2030, and it was completed this year. This is an initiative to guide collective action toward a healthy, sustainable, and just food system over the next decade with strategies to inform planning, policy, and investment. I wasn't able to finish, but I was, did bring to you a couple of documents, including a survey that we did on part of the food vision this past year, and these were surveys that we went into the community with hundreds of people and neighborhoods. And so this is sort of the priorities are for, with regards to our food system, you'll see that priorities are community gardens and access to culturally relevant foods. And the other thing I wasn't able to, to bring up is that the city, I would love for the city of Oceanside to be at the table in these conversations, that the County Board of Supervisors of San Diego is behind this document for the 2030 food vision. City of Oceanside has, I think, some catching up to do. This is the general plan for the city of San Diego, including urban agriculture. This was back in 2012. I will also leave this with the city clerk. Thank you for your time.
Esmeralda Aldez. Esmeralda Aldez to be followed by Eric Joyce.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Esmeralda Humminbird Aldaz. I'm a long-term resident here, born and raised, 38 years old, and a mother of three beautiful young daughters who all attend Oceanside schools. And I want to piggyback on what my colleagues here said. We need more farms here. We need more urban ag. Our children depend on it. Our communities depend on it. Who here knows where Mesa Margarita is? I'm sure a handful of people here do, but most of you don't. That's where I grew up. It's a predominantly low-income community off of North River Road and Oceanside, where predominantly seasonal farm workers lived at and still live at. I'm one of those. And we do not have a community garden. We are lacking resources in our neighborhood. Our schools do not have community gardens. We need to have infrastructure for water, which this beautiful, you know, vision draft is not really emphasizing that type of infrastructure for the city of Oceanside. It is critical for our future. It is critical for our children, and we would like to see that more moving forward in any plan when the city moves forward. Also, we all know that there's a huge oil spill going on near our coast. What are we going to be implementing in regard to that? We need to really consider being a fundamental key point, especially being next to the military base, to feed our people, to have clean water. That is important. Yes, shelter is very important, too, but I'm okay with just allowing tourists to come visit our beach and have a good time. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Eric Joyce.
Good evening, council. I want to thank staff for such a strong start to this process. There's a lot to like in the vision. I want to talk tonight about one particular part, the remarkable communities. I think it's great that it's right up front. It's extremely important to Oceanside. It's something that it sets us apart from our other communities around. Our communities are remarkable. When you walk through our communities, it's also remarkable how the basic care of parks, shade, canopy, sidewalks, crosswalks can vary so widely from underserved communities to communities of wealth. All of the elements in this vision are interdependent elements. They make our city more walkable, bikeable, and generally more livable, and those are all crucial to maintaining remarkable communities here in Oceanside. I would ask for the council to listen to community feedback and follow through as we go through this process. If we are not careful in planning our current residents, with our current residents in mind, then the beautification and the cultural celebration of our communities will end up being a memorial to the communities that were here and that used to be vibrant and diverse. Thank you for your time.
And that concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Back to the council, and what I understand is that staff is looking for direction, not necessarily motions, but general direction. So you're going to hear from the five of us, five of us. So starting off, we have Deputy Mayor Keim.
I'm glad I heard staff reference SB 9 and SB 10 tonight. I think that's some of the most concerning legislation from the state that's happened recently, and I think as we go forward with this general plan, we need to take any creative measures we have to retain our single-family neighborhoods while we also look for the corridors for our higher-density housing. With our arena numbers, we do not have to go into our single-family neighborhoods and change that, and I know that's going to be a challenge with SB 9 and 10, but I would encourage staff to look at any available remedies to push back and retain the character of those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss.
I have a couple of questions. Under fiscal impact in the staff report, it says does not apply. How much have we spent so far on this effort, roughly?
Councilmember Weiss, I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know exactly where we are in our budget.
If we got a $1.2 million grant and that covered 40%,
That's right.
I'm looking at somewhere around close to $2.5 to $3 million.
You're asking about the overall budget, which is on the order of $3 million?
Okay. How much longer is this effort going to go, and what is the estimated completion date?
We're looking at early 2023 to get that in front of the council for final adoption.
And what will that entail? When you say we'll bring that to council in 2023, is it going to be the individual elements of the general plan for approval and adoption, or is it more of a planning document?
Yeah, so at that point, we would be bringing forward final documents for final approval that would allow us to then move on to the implementation stage. Correct. And I'll just add, councilmember, that we will be looking to come before the group to get a preliminary nod on some conceptual components of the corridors plan to get a sense that we're going in the right direction with that before we start delving into the details.
Okay. I'm going to refer to Page 13, which is part of the vital and sustainable resources, I guess, element, which is going to take the place of our environmental element. And in it, it says that moreover, the city will support regional and subregional habitat conservation efforts that contribute to endangered systems of wildlife corridors and habitat preservation. One of the concerns I have is the ongoing, I don't want to say lack of direction, but the ongoing lack of completion of what we're going to do with the city's subarea plan. And in both 2017 and again in 2019, we received updates on the effort and costs associated with that, the significant costs associated with implementing it. One of the options that was considered, but from what I understand, they were never, it was never acted upon formally, was to include the subarea plan policies in the general plan update. So I'm going to move that we suspend adoption of the subarea plan as a standalone item and include the policies, goals, and objectives in the vital and sustainable resources element of this general plan update.
First of all, there was no, it was not noticed that we would be doing motions tonight. It was general direction to staff, so that could be brought back, but...
I don't believe that's true, but...
Why would we, I mean, I don't understand that. First of all, we are proceeding along with the subarea plan, and we are actually doing it, reducing costs. That is one of the main objectives, is reducing the cost to be able to, be able to be in a position to adopt the subarea plan and be able to, in fact, have the authority.
Who is "we"?
The city of Oceanside. To have, the city of Oceanside have the authority to actually do permits like we do with the coastal permits, to have the actual authority. So we would not be constantly going to the wildlife agencies for asking for permits. So anyway, Councilmember Jensen.
I had a question. We received a lot of emails regarding a mandatory sewer system in Southmore Hills and people losing their ability to keep their septic systems that they have now, and I was wondering if we could get some more clarity on that.
So we've heard those concerns as well, councilmember. It is something that we continue to explore. That's as much as I can share on, or know on that question, but it is a question that we are pursuing answers to.
If I could, Councilmember Jensen, and Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I mean, I can share with you, as was, I think, kind of clearly articulated when we presented the Southmore Hills draft community vision a number of months back, that our intent is not to penalize the existing property owners out there and force them into a sewer system. In our mind, if we were to introduce additional residential out there, the burden of that infrastructure would fall on the residential developers, not the existing residents out there. So I would say that that is, you know, that is our goal in all of these planning efforts as it relates to Southmore Hills.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Some of the speakers tonight brought up something near and dear to my heart, which is agriculture farming. When I got back from my second tour combat through VA medications and counseling, the only thing that really helped me therapeutically was getting into gardening in my backyard and the little space I had. And I really took it to heart to get into gardening and figuring out how to farm and grow our own food. And, you know, we started small, and then we grew from there. Eventually, I bought a farm out in Southmore Hills, and we grow avocado, guava, passion fruit, coffee, we put a well, and I love it. It's amazing, and it's, you know, good for the environment, it's good for the community, it's good for, it's good for a lot of things. And so there's this dynamic of the private sector, commercial sector, that has the capacity, the investors, the funding, the resources to manage and sustain the growth of agriculture and then move it through the supply chains. But I also understand there's this other idea that government can get involved in some way, shape, or form through donating land, providing the infrastructure of water and, you know, seed and all these variables, and that there's just going to be this group of volunteers, of trained individuals that are going to come and start growing food that somehow is going to make it through the supply chain, and hopefully there's no liability, and somebody doesn't come steal it, and the birds don't come, and they're not using the right products, and there's all these complexities. And so where I want to see the urban agriculture go is more on incentivizing agriculture growth, maybe within our light industrial areas or industrial areas, or, you know, obviously, anybody can grow whatever they want in their backyard, it's their private property. But what I, what I don't think really works, and this is my opinion, due to some of the reasons I just stated, is like a community garden in this community. I mean, we've had one, we've had a few in Oceanside, and we ended up building on top of it because it wasn't really being managed very well, right? And so I think, I think there's these ideas which sound great, but when it gets down into the dirty, government is the worst entity to partner up with something like this. That has to be something where government says, hey, you're a nonprofit, you have this idea, bring it to us, and we will work with you on it. But government's not going to take the initiative, nor are we meant to with, you know, outside of planning concepts and incentivizing zoning. And, you know, I would love to see vertical, you know, gardeners, I mean, that's the future of gardening, is growing vertically and, you know, using systems of water that sprays the roots and recycles, right? And so, I mean, you can literally grow, there's technology now with patents that you can literally grow in a room, you know, a little bigger than this, what you would, you know, what would take 400 acres to grow in the same amount of time with way less labor. And so what I'm getting at is I appreciate the feedback, and I don't know what sort of zoning or, you know, urban planning concepts need to be incorporated, but I think it's definitely worthwhile to look at incorporating some of those incentives, whatever that looks like, I don't even comprehend it, but so that we have more local growing or the private sector is incentivized to grow and help contribute to those food supply chains in a realistic, safe, consistent way that benefits the community. So that's all I'd like to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is, each one of us is giving input, and my first, my first thoughts have to do are with the process. I appreciate that we ended up using Zoom to have an early start in not delaying the process of going through this general plan update. We haven't done it in 30 years. What hopefully, and this is an exciting kind of opportunity, what hopefully we're doing is preparing for 2050, that, you know, maybe in 2050, we'll be looking back and saying, yeah, those are really good, it was a really good plan that we put in place. We actually thought about what we wanted our city to look like in 2050, that it was, it's going to be a sustainable community environmentally and economically. And so it's kind of exciting that we're starting this, and it's a great opportunity to look into the future and say, this is what we want our community to look like, you know, a sense of place, the character, and ensure the viability of the city. And it's something that I think that, that the community should all get involved in, be able to be involved in. And so since we do have four districts, I would like to see meetings, well, at least one meeting per district as we go forward to ensure that we have, you know, this notion, this, you know, we're going to, we're really looking towards the future. Yes, we have constraints from the state. Hopefully, some of them will go away because there's going to be a movement going on here. But really, really, basically, to look at what we have adopted and what we can adopt. So first of all, economic development element, I'd really like for us to follow through on that. There are some really, really tough things that they're asking us to do in the economic development element, basically saying, look, we can't, we can't wait. We have the lowest jobs-to-residents ratio in the county. If we continue to not do anything, we're not sustainable economically. We will not be sustainable economically or environmentally. We are top-heavy in terms of housing, and we have to do something about ensuring that we have more jobs in Oceanside. So one of the first things I'd want us to do is look at the uses that we have for the last available parcels that we have zoned industrially, and maybe see, say, well, maybe we don't need any more warehouses, you know, warehousing, you know, we've done that, we needed to do that. I think we begged, was it, did we beg for Coca-Cola to come? And now, we don't need to beg, you know? Well, okay, if we're going to beg, it's going to be for an employer, employment center that is going to be, you know, pay good wages, good salaries, high tech, maybe something, and, and get them to come to Oceanside and help get that, fill that gap. So that's the first thing for element, our economic development element. And of course, the, the Climate Action Plan, ensuring that, and that's where, you know, you've got the economic viability, then you've got sustainability, then you've got the environmental sustainability, and that's something that we really, really need to think about. Back in the day, you know, when I graduated from high school, it looked more like Fallbrook. It was 30,000, 40,000 people, okay? And who knew? Who knew that there was going to be all this development in Oceanside? There was nothing beyond the mission. And now we're this, this really built community. And one of the first things, and I, and funny thing, that I ended up getting my degree in urban studies, urban planning, going, going from Oceanside, like a Fallbrook community, over to Providence, Rhode Island, and getting to study the, getting to actually study this and, and look at the cities that we were actually reading about and applying those concepts to the communities that were having the really bad problems that we were having, like, say, back home. And unfortunately to say, it's unfortunate for me to say, that we still have those problems, right, in our urban places. So I would really like to make our city, if I'm looking at 2050, a completely livable and walkable, smart city. I'd like for us to have, to ensure that we have, and you, you know, you look at the concepts that they talk about in liberal cities, this international movement, right, that talks about, you know, ensuring that it's not too, too tall, you've got eyes on the street, and that you're able to really walk and able to ride your bicycle. So, you know, that, you know, that this international movement has been talking about separating bike paths, Class A. I would love for us to really get into class, a network of Class A bicycle, bicycle paths. We haven't done it yet, you know? It's still kind of dangerous to do, to ride your bike around Oceanside, not when I was a kid, but, you know, now, I wouldn't ride my bicycle, you know, there now. But really, look at how we can be more livable, be more walkable, and bicycle-friendly. I know I tend to get so excited that I want to just spill it all out here. Urban farms, we've been talking about urban farms for quite a long time. Someone called it urban ag. Okay, great, you know, we need to be doing this. We had the opportunity to save a farm in Fire Mountain. We had an urban farm, and he asked for help, and unfortunately, and I didn't even know he asked for help. That's how, you know, absent I was. I went there, I thought it was phenomenal what he was doing there, and unfortunately, he, he lost that ability and basically said, look, the city didn't help. City didn't help. Well, we need to be able to have the policies to be able to support things like that. I come from a long line of farmworkers. My grandfather was a farmworker, my dad was, my mom was a farmworker. My dad was, my mom was a farmworker. We traditionally had an urban farm, I guess, not just in the backyard, but a lot next door. This is what my grandfather would do. He would grow his corn, chiles. I mean, the guy, he was, he was cool. He even did his own sausages. They were strung around the house. It was really cool to, to visit my grandfather's home. So this whole notion of being able to be sustainable, you know, even in a, in a, in a micro way, is a phenomenal thing to not just pass down to your family members, but to your friends and to the school. You were right. We need to have these community gardens. By the way, the community garden in Eastside, actually, that was built on a property that was, that was designated for affordable housing. So it had to go away. It was moved to the Eastside and it's doing very well. So none of our farms, our gardens in, in Oceanside have failed. In fact, they have really, really prospered and we need more. We need more. We need them all in our schools and we need it in our neighborhoods. And yes, we can do that. We can do a farm on top of a building, a garden, garden, farm, whatever you want to call it. I do feel very strongly about South Memorial Hills that if you build one, you know, if you build outside of what we have now, we will destroy our farmland. I mean, bottom line is, it's not, it's, it's inconsistent. If you have houses next to a farm, it's inconsistent. Those folks are going to be talking and talk to the council until that is changed. So we can't, I mean, we had an earlier study back when, I think, two years ago, three years ago, when we had a very, very strong policy against urbanizing South Memorial Hills. And we need to do that. We need to go forward with the original plan, which was agritourism. We thought about what we needed to do to save farmland. And that was something that we need to continue to do. I have a lot more ideas. I was, I was hoping that this would be like in a workshop setting, so we could be a little more lax about time and stuff, but more lax. And I have a lot of other, as people were talking, as the presentation was going, I even, that's why I started to write notes and stuff. But there's so much that we can do and there's so much that we, the, the people have spoken, they do not want to urbanize or suburbanize, I guess, South Memorial Hills. We need to save it. And that's my time. So you've heard from the five of us? No, there's, we, no, no, I rule it out of order. If you want to go ahead and make a motion to, to have that brought back, we can do that so that people can have a chance to speak to it.
Mr. Mohn, can you weigh in on the motion that is on, on the table?
So I think the intent of the motion is that you want to see the policies in the Siberia Plan embedded within the future conservation and open space element that's being, being prepared in conjunction with the general plan update. That's part of it, is that right?
Correct. And suspend, suspend future work on the Siberia Plan.
I think that part of it, you could certainly, you know, if three of you express a desire for that, that could be your direction. And I believe that the city planner would plan on doing that. Suspending our participation in the Siberia Plan, you probably would want to direct us to agendize that component of it. And that could be done with this motion too, to bring that component back.
Then that'll be, then that's the motion then to stop work on it and bring it back to suspend the work on the Siberia Plan.
Okay.
I agree with the modification.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Okay, I'm going to speak against that motion. We, we have actually moved really far. Yeah. Well, this is another motion. We have moved really far towards working on adopting our Siberia Plan. Yes, I've, you know, Councilmember Rodriguez, I've heard you. I have 30 seconds to speak. We need to, and I'm asking you to vote against this motion because we have an opportunity to adopt it. We have, I, I believe that if we do not continue with the adoption, we are going to get a pushback by our, the wildlife agencies, everything that they've been able to, we've been able to get a lot of, lot of concessions. They're going to be moved back and we are going to have a much more difficult time of getting projects through. There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
And for some reason, our vote thing is not, there it is. Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you very much. Next are public communications on off-agenda items. How many do we have? Oh, wait a minute.
We have an advanced written request.
We do have number 24, advanced written request to speak. Ms. Carol Meeks.
And she is here in the audience.
Before I address the topic that I came here to discuss, I think I have, okay, five minutes. I would just like to say that I am more than willing to wait my turn and that is fair and reasonable and I don't expect any preferential treatment. However, I would ask that in the future, when there are only two people who have requested advanced written requests to, to speak, that they both be treated equitably. And I understand Mayor Sanchez, that you have the discretion and the right to pull people out of order. But again, when there are two people who have five minutes to speak, I would ask that rather than pull one person out and have them speak at the beginning of the council so everyone present can hear their topic, then have the other person wait. You either have both people speak at the beginning or you have both people wait. I just believe in justice and fairness is just how I was raised. But I understand that perhaps the Day of the Dead and Haunted Market and Halloween is really critical and a high priority to you. I would ask that you consider making people dying on the streets of Oceanside an equally high priority because that's what I'm here to speak about this evening. And I would have, would have been nice if more people could have heard it. I am here again, and I will continue to come here, to ask that the city council and the mayor consider and in fact, implement a safe parking lot. I've recently found out about an individual who died on the streets of Oceanside recently. It was on Facebook. And I'd like to say to you that homeless people and unhoused people, they matter too. And the ordinance that I've brought up to you before, where this city council made it illegal for individuals in oversized vehicles to park on the street from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. is costing lives. So I'm not going to belabor the point, but I'm going to ask you two questions. And one is, do you want to be known as a city council that is kind and considerate and caring? Or do you want to be known as a city council that's a killing city council essentially, that you make ordinances that result in people dying? The second question I would ask is that when are you going to bring the issue of safe parking on, as an agenda item that you will discuss? So far, CNN, CBS, almost all the major networks have understood that there are increasing numbers of people living in vehicles. It's a national phenomenon. It's not just in California. It's not just in San Diego County. It's not just in Oceanside. It's a national phenomenon. And progressive city councils across the country are addressing it and dealing with it. I'm asking the city council members here to address it and deal with it. You can bury your head in the sand and ignore it until it becomes such an overwhelming crisis that then untold resources are going to have to be put towards it, or you can address it now. You know, the persistent determination of a righteous minority will change the hearts of an oblivious or even I would go so far as to say uncaring majority. And this issue is going to be a resounding issue that the minority is going, a persistent minority, including myself, is not going to let go away. I would submit to you that that premise of a determined majority changing the hearts was apparent with Dr. Martin Luther King. And I would also submit to you that this issue of homeless and unhoused is the civil rights issue of this decade, if not future decades, if not the balance of this century, depending on the direction that city councils and local governments like you go. So I'm asking you again to bring this matter to the agenda. I understand you told me to check and see about getting it on the agenda. Well, it's kind of a, I, I don't even, the word escapes me that I want to use, but it's not a valid statement.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ultimately, you have the authority to deny that. So it comes back to you, full circle to you. So I'll ask you again, would you bring this matter of a safe parking lot to the agenda so each and every one of you will address it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now on item number 25, which is off agenda items. And our first speaker is John Bodoroff, to be followed by Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Michael A., to be followed by Cheyenne.
Mayor Sanchez and the city council, my name is John Bodoroff, CleanEarthForKids.org. Today is California Clean Air Day and I ask the city to take climate change actions with the goal of zero carbon emissions by 2035. Please move forward quickly with joining a CCE with 100% renewable energy and also only purchase zero emission city vehicles. We must move away from fossil fuels and the Huntington Beach oil spill is a reminder of why. Please direct staff to draft a building electrification reach code like the city of Encinitas to stop natural gas lines in new construction and draft an ordinance to stop wood burning fireplaces in new construction as well. Wood smoke is a complex mixture of gases and fine particles that irritate the lungs and are linked to not only lung problems, but heart and brain conditions like Alzheimer's and Parkinson's. Wood smoke also contains cancer-causing pollutants like benzene, formaldehyde, acrylene, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. Last, but certainly not least, I ask the city to remove the beachfire rings at the harbor. I've spoken with the harbor authority and the city lifeguards and they want them removed as well. Trash, debris, pallets, and even furniture often burned in the rings, leaving nails and hot coals in the sand. It is a liability to allow the beachfires. Everyone has the right to clean air, the right to go to the beach and the harbor without coughing and risking their health. By allowing beachfires, you are denying equal access to those with lung conditions like asthma or COPD. And black children have twice the asthma rates as white children. We must protect our air and we have fires throughout the state with smoke drifting all the way to the East Coast and beyond. Please give people a place to go for clean air. Lastly, I ask the city to bring, please bring back Zoom access and council meetings to increase public participation and access. The county, along with the cities of Carlsbad, Encinitas, Solana Beach, La Mesa, Poway, San Diego, and others allow for teleconferencing participation and Oceanside should do the same. Please bring it back. All people should be able to be heard by the council and be part of the decision-making process. Thank you.
Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Michael A., to be followed by Cheyenne.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Sanchez. Hi, and city council, we're so happy to be here tonight. We're CleanEarthForKids.org. And today, as John said, it is California Clean Air Day. So let's do everything we can to reduce toxic pollution and greenhouse gases. And yes, so excited that about CCE last week, great job. So excited to purchase renewable energy. We've got to stop burning fossil fuels for our kids' future and for their hearts and their lungs and their brains. Air pollution is very toxic to the brains. There are a lot of studies about this and we want to help children's learning potential and we don't want to do anything that will diminish that. So thank you again so much for all that you do. So when we think about how we're going to reduce air pollution, we look around and we think, okay, we need more charging stations. And at the last check, Oceanside had a thousand, Public Works told me that there was room for a thousand trees in Oceanside. As you know, we write grants. I don't take a salary. We're, you know, Clean Earth For Kids. And we haven't accepted any grant money from the city of Oceanside as well, just to say. But we're working really, really hard on educational programs and we're excited to work with you. So we want to, we want to eliminate smoke, wood smoke at the, at the fire rings in Oceanside. I know it's not popular. I know. I know it's hard. But what we have to do is let people know that wood smoke is toxic. And the harbor authority talks about, you know, the terrible things that are going on there. On our pollution meter, it's 152 and 157 PM 2.5. So no child should be exposed to this. And the only places where the overnight parking is, where the camping is right there at the, at the beach and so kids are covered in smoke. Also, you met Gideon. He is our, one of our Clean Earth For Kids, kids that is a severe burn victim. Unfortunately, Gideon has had to attend very many, well, not very many, how many? Too many, there shouldn't be any, funerals for his other friends at the Burn Institute that didn't make it. When, and we came here before talking about this because it was super important to Gideon because he saw that kids were there when he was at a party and running around and he knew that it was unsafe. So he came to speak with you. And if you'd like to see Clean Earth For Kids about us, you can see Gideon. He was so brave to share with you and talk with you. So that was like three years ago. So today, we would ask you to please consider taking out the fire rings. Also, thank you so much for going forward with what you're doing with CCE. And we really would love to partner with these no idling signs and all of the great work that you're doing. So thank you again so much from Clean Earth For Kids. Want to plant those trees and the organic gardens and all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael A. And if you have any posters, you're more than welcome to put them on the document table.
Can we give Michael A. a microphone so we can see him?
Definitely. I think we could put booster stools on our next budget.
Hi, my name is Michael. I am with CleanEarthForKids.org. Today is California Clean Air Day. Please stop burning wood smoke at the beach. Everyone needs to clean air. Smoke harms our, smoke harms our lungs. In our learning, I want to be able to go to the beach and have cleaner to breathe. Please turn off your engines because car exhaust hurts our, hurts our lungs. Fossil fuels pollute the air and water, the water. We need to stop burning fossil fuels. Let's get electric cars and charging stations, stations. Let's plant more trees, stop single-use plastics, and protect our waste water and wetlands from pesticides. We need 100% renewable energy. Please go to our action plan and you can see the important things we're trying to do for children with health, for health, for children's health and future. Please join us on our website to save our air and our water and oxygen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheyenne.
Hi, I'm Cheyenne from CleanEarthForKids.org. Happy Cleaner Day. First, I want to talk about idling. We'd like you guys to turn off your engines when parked because car exhaust is toxic. We are putting, we are excited to be putting no idling signs in parks and in front of city buildings, in front of city buildings to stop air pollution. No idling means less asthma to kids like me in hospitals. Smoke triggers asthma and smoke is, and smoke is toxic air pollution. Smoke harms our brains, hearts, and lungs. We'd also like to let people know that wood smoke is bad to breathe and we should stop it. Last but not least, I'd like to thank for, thank you guys for stopping pesticides and park all around Oceanside and to stop offshore drilling and no fracking. Please protect our water. Water is life and we need social justice for every child to have a great future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Esmeralda Aldez, to be followed by Marty Sol, to be followed by Michelle Correio. followed by Michelle Correa. Esmeralda, are you still around? Okay, we'll move on to our next speaker, Marty Sol.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Sanchez and the city council. My name is Marty Sol, and I'm a community liaison with CleanEarthForKids.org, and we work to help protect children's health, public safety, clean air, and the planet. We have a lot of fun contests that the kids can participate in, emailing their signs for like no idling contests. So, this is just a little something fun that we do for them. And we're really excited that we get to plant some new trees in Oceanside. We're working towards that, and we're looking forward to planting a lot more. This organization has brought an incredible awareness to my children, who just spoke regarding our environment and our earth. And I'm really, really excited to work with them as well as implementing the new, no idling signs in Oceanside as well. They continue with the organization to advocate to turn off the engines and prevent the smoke. We know that car exhaust contains many harmful chemicals, and of course, some of them are like formaldehyde, benzene, sulfur dioxide, VOCs, and the list goes on and on. And these can cause cancer, lung, heart, and problems with our brain and different neurological disorders. It shouldn't be a toxic experience for a parent to have to walk the kids to school. A lot of times, we don't think about that, but being in this organization, we learn a lot of things of what's going on around us, knowing that there's a lot of families and parents, like today's Clean Air Day, and a lot of people are trying to walk and telecommute and not use their cars, but at the same time, we've got a lot of people leaving their cars on while they're at school or in different public areas. And so, bringing this awareness that we can make a difference by making these simple changes. They're not always simple, actually, because I know sometimes it could be a great sacrifice to do things like trying to give up our AC when we're running our car, or things like that. It's not, it's not easy, but at the same time, we know that giving up something good for something better truly makes a difference. And I just, I want to share, David O'Malley said, "It's better to prepare and prevent than to repair and to repent." And so, I know that this applies to clean air and knowing that we can put a stop to this. And if you have that power to do that, we ask that you do make those decisions. At Clean Earth for Kids, we ask to please invest in renewable energy. We ask to please help stop the burning of fossil fuels. We ask to please work for clean water. And we know that fracking and offshore drilling is extremely harmful, and to stop. We encourage you to check out our website, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Correa. And then, also, last call for Esmeralda Aldez. I think she may have already left, but, Michelle Correa?
Hi, my name's Michelle Correa. I'm an Oceanside resident, and I also work downtown. Today, I had a homeless person come to my office and literally start taking trash out of the trash can and throwing it at myself and a colleague inside of our office. So, that's one issue. The other issue is, I was wondering if you guys know about the trash in the downtown area? It's not being like emptied the way it's supposed to. I heard that the trashmen are contracted to empty the cans twice a day. It's not happening. There's just trash everywhere. So, I was hoping that someone can maybe put me in touch with whomever is in charge of facilitating the trash and making sure it's like, it's so bad that the downtown, all that redevelopment is beautiful. The trash is out of control. So, I'm hoping that you guys can just put me in touch with the right person to take care of that, and I'll be more than happy to be on an ad hoc committee to make sure, follow up, that it gets done. It's just unacceptable. There's too much beauty to let it be spoiled by what we have going on down there.
Looks like Mr. Gossman's on his way over to speak with you, if you'd like to meet him.
I'd love that. And over here, off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we're on item number 25. Mayor and our council member, excuse me, general council member comments, number 20, it doesn't have a number. No? Okay. Then we are adjourning this meeting to Wednesday, October 20th, 3:30. Thank you.